You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening again and welcome back to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, October 27th meeting. We are turning back to our open session. The next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can please stand to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray, please. Tonight, we ask for prayers for all our families in our school system. We pray especially for our teachers and our staffs and all who work hard for the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. It is not easy right now for so many of us. So we pray that you will wrap your arms around our teachers, our staffs, and the people in this school system that need you. We pray that all will remain healthy and safe in your life.
Before we go to the next agenda item, which is the actual agenda review, I would just like to take chair privilege and recognize the birthday of Board Member Calvert-Hayes. Yesterday was actually her birthday and so we are celebrating it tonight. I see Davis here with her balloons and the bouquet of flowers that we were able to get to Light on behalf of our board. I would just like to say that tonight, Lyta, this board gifts you with the best of us. We're trying, okay? That's our gift to you, so thank you. Also, I would like to recognize breast cancer awareness and that's why you see us with all of the pink that's on. And we are very prayerful for those whom are battling cancer and celebrating those whom have survived, like my sister, Janelle Roberts, who survived breast cancer. I don't know if anybody else have a name they would like to recognize as a breast cancer survivor. I think it's the fitting for us to, as a community, recognize the good that is going on right now and to celebrate one another as we try to move forward in these complicated and difficult times. With that being said, we are at the agenda review. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved. Any question or discussion about the agenda? Okay. Deion, you think I should go first, I guess, through the... Okay, so we'll go ahead and call for the vote by first attending to our board members that's calling in through Zoom, well, yeah, through Teams, rather. Board Member Berg?
Present.
We were getting a vote for the agenda, so you just need to say yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Okay, for those of us who are here, all of those in favor? Thank you. The agenda has been approved. Next, we will have public comments on agenda items only. And please know that we reserve this time for agenda items only, for tonight's agenda, of course. And you should direct your comments only to myself as the chair. Just realize that we will not respond back to you, but if all possible, we will make sure that if needed tonight, someone from staff can answer any of your questions when appropriate. We do ask, obviously, that you are respectful and kind and know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. And you will have tonight one minute because we have quite a few people calling in and we also have people here. We will allow for the people here to go first so that if you only anticipate speaking and leaving, you have that option to do so. And then we will, of course, bring in the folk that's calling in. And we thank everyone for their patience and their willingness to adjust tonight to try to accommodate everyone that's speaking. So the first person we have in person is Ashley Wallace. And please make sure, Ms. Wallace, that you stand at the green tape. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Dr. Hairston, members of the board. I am here to beg of you tonight to not delay school any longer. Our children cannot take much more of this as they have already lost so much. My son went from being an excited, happy child to sad, frustrating, and hating school. We have had to put him in therapy over this. It is very hard for him to learn over computer, so his self-esteem has dropped dramatically. My husband and myself are both essential workers and do the best we can, but we definitely are not qualified to be teachers. We cannot provide the education that he needs and deserves. His teacher is amazing, but she can only do so much over a computer and with only an hour and a half a day. We have left to do the rest. Private and charter schools are doing this successfully every day, so why can't we? Are we teaching our children that because their parents can't afford a private education that they are getting left behind? Is this the message our board wants to send to our children? I beg of you tonight to let our children know that they matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Next, we have, I think it's Elias Siddle. I may be mispronouncing your name, forgive me.
You said my first name correctly.
Yes, ma'am. Well, how do you pronounce your last name?
Cydel.
Cydel, thank you.
We need to go back to school to see our friends and learning virtual is hard to hear our teachers, but due to all the glitching, it is difficult. And to learn math is hard, especially with trying to learn hands-on instead of not on screen. It is overwhelming as a kid to face this every day.
Thank you, Elias. I want you to know this board is very proud of you. It takes a strong courageous person to come up and speak in the public, so thank you. Next, we have Joe Cydel.
Good evening, board. Speak your mind even if your voice shakes. When you least expect it, someone may actually listen to what you have to say. Well, slingshots can topple giants. Maggie Kuhn. That is what I am attempting to do this evening. I know that most of you, your minds are made up, but I'm hopeful that I can see, help you see another perspective, at least for a moment. COVID-19 has been here for over seven months and it's not going anywhere. We don't have a vaccine, we have data. The CDC stated in July that the available evidence provides reason to believe that in-person schooling is the best interest of our students. After a quarter of online learning, my question for you is this: Is it still worth it? Is it worth it for the single parent who could, who is barely hanging on? Is it worth it for the special needs child who cannot do virtual? What price are we paying for these children now who spend hours in front of a screen when we have data that shows we need to limit screen time?
Thank you, Ms. Cydel. Next, we have Amanda Yocely.
Dear board members, I'm not sure if you've heard, but the Charlotte Mecklenburg and Wake County school districts have opened for in-person instruction. These two counties are the largest in North Carolina with more people and twice the amount of cases. The last time I spoke to the board, I was approached by Ms. Crowley and Ms. Kaplan, and I was told that EC children were top priority. Today, they continue to receive little to no instruction because they can't learn virtually. There are two surveys making the rounds. One was released at the last board meeting and the results were astounding. Out of 31,967 elementary and middle school parents, 17,856 parents wanted to return to school in person. The second survey was released this morning and promptly removed. It stated that 14,948 parents wanted their children to return to school in person. Both of the surveys conducted did not include parents of our most vulnerable to depression, the high schoolers. But they did say the same thing: Remote learning isn't working and the majority want to learn in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yocely. Next, we have Amy Grubbs.
Okay, so first, I would like to say thank you to the members on this board fighting for a decent education for our children. I know that emotions are high, especially after the unanimous complaints to parents' employers as a form of retaliation and, of course, the Hunger Games quote. But I do come in peace. I realize this virus is real and people are scared. I repeat, I respect that, but parents, teachers, and especially students should have the choice to be able to learn in person with proper precautions. This BOE is simply not working for its stakeholders. Please explain why it's okay to have churches and community centers open for e-learning but students can't be in their actual classrooms with their teachers that want to show up for their students. This newest work-life balance is impossible for parents. This BOE's expectations needs to be put in check and redirected with a way more, with way more input from teachers and parents. I can't speak for everybody in this room, but the 12-plus different platforms that parents and teachers have to work with are ineffective and ridiculous.
Thank you, Ms. Grubbs.
And I do have a letter from a child that I would like to pass.
Could you send it to the board attorney? Thank you. Mark Wilson?
Deny the motion. If it comes up for a vote, don't second it. If it does, kill it. It doesn't, it doesn't work. Look, listen, and learn. 380,000 people live in Forsyth County. You've got 8,700 that have been affected. That's 98% that don't have this. Children under 18, no deaths. Children under 18, barely get this. Get back to school. The listen part, Dr. Old, all of Forsyth Health experts, everybody in here, said it's safe to return. Children are not a risk, especially the K-2s. Stay with the plan. On the board, the board here went out and visited several schools. It's working. Every private school in this county has gone without an issue, okay? Manary City, Stokes County, everybody is going. What is wrong? I can't figure it out. Taxpayers, you guys want for the taxpayers, open these schools. 18,000, she just mentioned, said, "Let's go in person." I'm going to close on this. My mom taught school in public schools here for decades. My sister teaches public school now. My sister-in-law, my wife, is a healthcare provider for 40 years. It's done excellent. My daughter, same thing. Our son serves this country and defends this country on dangerous and demanding missions. You cannot do, you cannot do virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
You can't do virtual.
Thank your son for serving our country too.
You cannot do virtual education, can't do virtual healthcare.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next, we have Val Young.
Hi, board.
Hey, how are you doing?
I'm fine. First and foremost, I would like for everybody to know that teachers, educators want to be in the classroom with their children, but only when it's safe. We need the threshold, the clear threshold number of when we're going to open school. Is it going to be 3%? Is it going to be 5%? Once we have those clear numbers, once we're in school, we need to know that consistent numbers so that we'll know if numbers go back up that we need to close schools back down. We also need to make sure that we have the proper PPEs for our TAs, our teacher assistants, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, the people getting our children out of the cars and doing screening because they are our frontline workers and we have to protect them. We also need more staff in our schools so that we can do proper cleaning in our schools. We need more staff to escort our children from one place to the other. They're not going to be able to go by themselves. So I'm going to say it again. Educators want to educate, but we want to do it only when it's safe.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Alan Daniel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Saturday, Forsyth County had 154 cases. That puts our two-week number at 267, according to the CDC, the highest risk to return. Today, Forsyth County Health Department released the highest risk to return. Today, more elementary schools closed because of five cases for only the rest of the week. Why not 14 days like the CDC recommends? Rockingham County went Plan B on 9/21. Last night, they announced they're going back Plan C. Half of their schools have had to close. Today, I've learned of three more schools with positive cases in Forsyth County. That puts our number at 15 out of 81. That's 19% of our schools, over 20 educators. Why are teachers even required to be at school if the students aren't? I've heard of middle school teachers that host admins are requiring that they be there two weeks before the district requires them. Some educators have told me that they're required to be at school on Election Day. Why? There's going to be a COVID cloud over every polling place.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Next, we have.
He took some extra time. I'm going to take some extra.
No, you're not. So you can't tell us.
There was a COVID cloud as of every polling.
Excuse me, Mr. Daniel. That's it, Mr. Daniel. You don't tell us. You need to respect what we're saying to you.
You need to respect me as much as you respect him.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Daniel.
If he went extra.
Doug, Mr. Simmons?
I see how it works.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here tonight to ask you not to delay the reopening of schools any further. My daughter is in kindergarten and she's not receiving the education that she deserves by sitting in front of a computer for approximately four hours a day. There are so many distractions daily to take away from already limited instruction time. Parents were given the opportunity back in the summer to enroll in the Virtual Academy if we did not feel comfortable sending our children to in-person learning. Private schools in our county have been open since August and have not had any virus outbreaks. So why can't we open the schools to the ones that wish to attend? Why not let the people that elected you into your current positions decide if your children should attend in-person learning or not? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Alfred Harvey.
Chair Woodbury, distinguished board, I'm here for a different subject. I'm here talking about the new search for a superintendent. I'm asking that you have a transparent process in place, not this opaque thing that happened with the acquisition or hiring of Dr. Hairston where you sent in something on a tape or something like that. Do like we did when we brought Larry Koble here. Bring him before people or bring those people before you and let them talk to the public. Let the public get a feel for them. I'm asking you to do that because when you do that, now the public has a better value. And Dr. Hairston, I'd like to thank you. Thank you for what you did for our school system, even though it was real brief. And I told you from my heart, I love you, but I'm disappointed that you came here and you left so soon.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
With a job undone and not finished.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
That's all on this board.
Thank you. Ms. Whitney Locken, I'm sorry.
Stick with me because I don't like public speaking. Good evening. I'm coming to you tonight as a nurse and a mother of three young children. I'm here tonight to plead with you to allow our school, children to return to school and not delay them. Let's talk about science. Professor Oster at Brown University headed up the most comprehensive database on schools and COVID since the pandemic began. The data included 200,000 people from 550 schools across 47 states. From the last two weeks of September, here's what they found: An infection rate of 0.13% among students and 0.24% among staff. Infection rates in schools have shown to be far lower in younger children than that of the general population or colleges. The 10-day rolling average of cases in Forsyth County has continued to remain at or under 5%. Therefore, we have met the criteria you have put in place. There should be no reason for our children K-2 to be delayed. Mecklenburg-Wake are going back. Davie-Davidson, Surrey, New Hanover, where we came from, and counties in other states such as Duval in Florida where we have family have all gone back and their students are thriving. Private schools in Forsyth County has had success for month after month. Why can't our children go back? As Dr. Old stated in the last meeting, we can.
Thank you, Ms. Locken.
Can I finish, please? I just have a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Locken. Sorry. We're going to move forward. Thank you. Rhonda Mays?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am coming before you to discuss the superintendent's search. As you get ready to do this search, I would ask that you go back and look at the second, your second and third pick. Instead of going and spending all this money all over again, you know, because if we could, we keep spending all this money for a search, we can use that money for other things. And I know budget line items and things have to be spent accordingly. But we don't need to spend the kind of money that we spent on the last search to do another search. Whoever your second and third pick were, go back and see if they're interested in being the superintendent here at the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, and lastly, in person, we have Kelly Easton.
Good evening. As the Executive Director for Action for Equity, I'm here to encourage this board to look forward and to not look back. Stick with Dr. Hairston's strategic plan that you, our community, and our families worked hard to craft. Make sure that our interim, as well as our next superintendent, is one who has the experience, capacity, and the courage to move us forward. Don Martin is not a step forward. Since the day you were sworn into office, December 13, December 13, 2018, to be exact, there have been many disappointments coming from this board. Losing our superintendent who have came in as a transformational leader is chief among them. I encourage you to be very considerate when you make decisions for our children. Make sure that every decision that you make, that you are putting our children in the center of it. That is your sworn obligation. We are, we walking you forward and not looking back.
Thank you, Ms. Easton. Next, we have some call-in folk. And I would just, you know, reiterate to those whom are calling in that you have one minute just because we had quite a few people calling in and we have quite a few people here speaking. So we're trying to accommodate the public as best as we possibly can. I don't want anybody to think that we're being rude or displaced by, you know, the concerns. I asked that you continue to email and communicate with us. I know my number is public and, you know, the different ways that you can if you, you know, have additional questions or concerns. But I know that right now, you know, our district folk have control kind of over when people speak and not. So just know that at the one-minute point, you will be disconnected. And again, you know, please be patient with the process. First, we have on line Tiffany Kratzser. Dr. Tiffany Kratzser? Dr. Tiffany Kratzser? Okay, we'll move forward. If she comes in, we'll pick her back up. Mrs. Betsy Hanks?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is this Mrs. Betsy Hanks or Tiffany Kratzser?
This is Betsy Hanks.
Okay, thank you.
You can... Okay, great. So I would say, good evening, it's Chair Woodbury and members of the school board. As a parent, I advocate for my own child, but as a teacher, I am called to advocate for all schools and students. This is part of my job description and how I am evaluated as an effective teacher in North Carolina. Previously, you voted to use the CDC indicators for reopening schools. However, you did not choose which threshold we would need to meet to open safely. Ideally, we would use the indicators in the green columns to give us the lowest or lower risk of transmission. I ask that you please set a goal to guide all teachers, students, and staff in our returning to and reopening schools. And I would say, instead of being in limbo for two weeks each time we meet the metrics, I also ask that you vote to remain in Plan C through the end of the semester. And education consistency is key. Everyone needs more than a two-week notice when switching from remote to hybrid learning. Nothing has changed about this virus since we shut down schools in March and we can't pretend that it will suddenly go away.
Thank you, Ms. Hanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Next, we have Ms. Yolanda Dickerson. Ms. Yolanda Dickerson, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. I am a long-term substitute teacher, recently licensed, special education teacher. Yes, during these times of uncertainty, I have decided to make a commitment of education. And oh, the places I have gone. From the perspective as a parent, teacher, and a citizen, I have concerns. Yes, I would love to see the students. It would make it all so much easier. But in this instance, it's easier necessarily, safe for better. It is my intention as a teacher to provide safety to students first and foremost. This is why I feel as if we need to hold off on in-person learning for students and staff due to the fluctuation and now increased occasions. I have personally experienced family members die due to COVID and so I'm currently in recovery. It is not pretty. Please consider my request in kindness and love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Justin Green. Mr. Justin Green. Okay, next, we have Ms. Marta Roman.
Hello, Justin Green here.
Okay.
Am I good to go?
Yes.
I want to offer some nuance to the New England Journal of Medicine article cited by Chair Woodbury in her concluding speech at the last open board meeting. Two elements of that article are not present in our school system, so we cannot reopen now. First, it says in medium transition areas, transmission areas, teachers deserve hazard pay and students should participate in routine pool testing. Neither of those can happen. In fact, our teachers are told to shut up on social media. Second, the author's clearly states schools in low transmission environments produce safe, appropriate instruction. That's not Winston right now. You've heard from others that there's petition that says 17,000 children are going to come back to school, that initial petition announced it at a time when the school board had said 5% would be the rate. That's not the case now. My only request is that please take a vote on the level of acceptable risk. If you think that experts and majority of parents who support cutoffs at low levels are wrong, please just say so. It will allow us a much better path forward to figure out what's best for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Marta Roman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can. You may start. Thank you.
Hear me?
Yes, we can. You can start. I'm not sure if... Okay.
Can you hear me?
We...
Can you hear me? This is Marta Roman.
Yes, we can hear you. Please start.
Good evening. I'm asking you to prioritize remote learning rather than reopening school buildings in the coming weeks. Forsyth County has a 14-day total case count of 783 with an incidence rate of 204.8. We are now at high risk of transmissions in school. Pre-case start date is now two weeks from original date, pushing K-3 to the week before Thanksgiving. We would be in school a total of seven days in November and 11 days in December before winter break. Is it worth risking the health and possible lives of our students, teachers, and support staff for a total of 18 days? With our COVID numbers the way they are and several schools reporting positive cases, the responsible decision could be... the responsible decision could be, should be, to keep us safe and remain virtual. It's not wise for us to uproot our virtual learning routines and live having to return to it because our numbers increased due to Thanksgiving gatherings and travel. Flu season coupled with cold weather will likely increase the risk of infection. Also, as professionals, we should have the option, as we did back in August, to teach remotely from home or...
Thank you, Ms. Roman. Next, we have Dr. Peter Antonazi. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Dr. Peter Antonazi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can now. You may start.
Great. Good evening. I have one reminder and two thank you. My reminder is that a public records request was submitted on September 29th, so please respond to the request. My first thank you is for our community. The board meeting held on October 1st was a hot mess of information and misinterpretation of the CDC metrics. Our great community stepped up, provided an honest understanding of the metrics, and publicly shared up-to-date risk assessments. The important lesson here for the board is, the community is here to help. This is too large a task to go it alone. My second thank you is for our teachers. Your perseverance and resilience is truly amazing. You are our friends, mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, husbands, and wives. We love you and we want you to be safe. Let our community know when the COVID risk mitigation plans promised are not delivered, and we will advocate for you. We are here to help. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Alicia Smith. Ms. Alicia Smith. While we're transitioning to Molly Muse, and if Ms. Smith comes on, I'll get her next. But we have a person that we missed in-house right now, and it might be past bedtime or getting close. So I wanted to accommodate my little friend to come up and read her statement. And I hope that no one in the audience mind if I do make sure she gets her statement out, if it goes a little over.
Another reason why we, then, another reason why we need to go back to school is because we want to see our teacher. And online is hard. Some, sometimes we can't hear our teacher on Zoom.
Thank you. What is your name?
Evie.
Evie, that's a beautiful name. And you, again, a very brave young person to come up and speak to the board, and we're very proud of you. We hope you have a good evening. Thank you. Next, we have Alicia Smith. Ms. Molly Muse.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is this Alicia Smith or Molly Muse?
Molly Muse.
Okay, thank you. You can start.
I considered, thank you. I considered talking about a lack of transparency of information, or the long list of unanswered questions, or the confusion from different policies at different schools, or the fact that it always falls on teachers to just figure it out, but decided to talk about sacrifice. Teachers sacrifice evenings, weekends, holidays, and family time on our planning and grading. We sacrifice our own money on snacks, supplies, even furniture to make our room warm and engaging. The ROI is worth it. When we see a kid's face light up because they get it, when we see how happy they are in our classrooms, it's worth the sacrifices. But now teachers are being asked to sacrifice too much for too small an ROI. We're being asked to sacrifice our health and our family's health, possibly in the long term with chronic complications, possibly our lives, like Julie Davis. For what? So kids can be in school for four days a month, so they can sit in a classroom and continue to learn socially distanced, which is basically virtual learning? The ROI doesn't justify the sacrifice. And without clear and consistent policies in place before we reopen, without transparency, we can't be safe, and there will be sacrifices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. C.D. Thomas. Mr. C.D. Thomas. Next, we have Michelle Jordan. Michelle Jordan. Next, we have Tina Trutanich, Trutanic. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Ms. Tina Trutanic. Next, we have Sarah Jacobson. Sarah Jacobson. Next, we have Anna May Gals.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Anna May. Can you hear me?
I can, Anna May. You may start.
Okay, thank you. It needs to be said, thank you, teachers, for what you have done to provide amazing education for our children while many take care of their own children and navigate a global pandemic. You have risen the occasion with resilience, kindness, and professionalism. I am concerned about an aggressive path to return to this classroom without what appears to be proper protections for our teachers, staff, and students. I have seen photos of meager supplies given to teachers for their safe return. In quotes, I have heard that there will be 15 students per class, while also hearing from teachers, they will have more than this. Our teachers need to be offered the same protection, like the plexiglass barriers I see at this meeting. I am appalled that teachers are going to be expected to clean and monitor bathrooms as a risk mitigation strategy. Teachers are not expendable and should not be expected to do anything more than teach. Increase school nurses and social workers to care for increased mental, material, and physical needs of students. There's not even one dedicated per school. Consider Plan C until at least after the second quarter to give more time for creative and safe solutions. This pandemic has put a magnifying glass on disparities inherent in our current system. Please consider disparities when moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Gals. Mr. Tom Rudulovic.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You can start.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Thank you. Hello? This is Tom Rudulovic. Can you hear me?
Okay, give me one second. I'm trying to get some direction. I think I have a couple of people online. Sorry. Okay, we're going to go back up to Mr. C.D. Thomas.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you for your time. I appreciate you guys hearing me tonight and listening to everybody. I know it seems like that some people think that the louder you yell, the more right your opinion is, or the bigger following you get on social media, pressure you guys. I'm just asking you guys to make educated decisions. The metrics right now say that we're worse off than when this started. It's not getting any better, and they told us that since this started, that this was going to happen in the fall. We know what to expect. So I'm not going to throw a lot of numbers at you and this and that. I'm just going to ask you, if someone, if this affects their family, when the first teacher or student dies, are you guys okay having that blood on your hands? Just please, please, make an educated decision looking at the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we, Kevin?
Can you hear me? Excuse me? Is this Sarah Jacobson?
Cheryl.
Can you hear me? I couldn't get on earlier. It wasn't letting me off mute. Um, good evening. Oh, can I speak?
This is, I'm sorry, who?
Sarah Jacobson.
Sarah Jacobson. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. You may start.
Thank you for working so hard to make that happen. I appreciate that. You guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Jacobson, and I'm a nine-scooter here in the district. With COVID cases on the rise, there has never been a worse time to open schools. Imagine how much worse it will get when a bunch of students and staff are put in an enclosed space and flu season hits. But the district has the means and motive to test all those who are returning. Many children are carriers for the virus but don't know until it's too late and they've infected others. What happens to the innocent children who are the ones causing fatalities? With our absurdly long break this year, there is no denying several families will pack their bags and go on vacation, further exposing themselves to the virus. When their kids go back to school, they will expose other students and teachers. I would like to know what's going on with the mask policies. What happens when students or staff members refuse to wear masks properly? Is there a district-wide policy, or is it up to each principal? How will this be enforced? My final question is about midterm testing in January. What happens to all the students like myself who attend a magnet school and are now getting no busing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Michelle Jordan.
How about Tom Rudulovic? He's on your list?
Yes, we do. You may start.
Okay, thank you. I am against Plan B. It is overly complex. Clearly, the complexities have not all been addressed. It is overly indulgent to the squeaky ear wheels in this community. I'm in favor of Plan A when it is safe. It is not safe. The only reasonable plan is to stick with Plan C. And I also would love the answer to two questions. One, does the state-provided life insurance pay off in the case of a pandemic death? And two, will the legal department commit to not opposing workers' comp claims for teachers who are making a COVID claim? That, to me, is really a policy that goes against teachers who may be asked to come back into the room.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have Dr. Joshua Ziesel? Dr. Josh Ziesel? Is Ms. Celeste Holcomb? Celeste Holcomb?
Good evening, board members. I'm calling because I'm a community member who doesn't want to die. COVID cases are at record highs in North Carolina, much higher than they were in the spring when schools were closed, and yet you're considering opening the schools. Opening will increase COVID transmission in this community. This will kill people. Make this make sense.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Ryan Lee Runyon.
Hi, Chair Woodbury. Can you hear me? This is Joshua Ziesel.
Okay, yes, we can. We'll get Ms. Runyon in a second.
Sorry about that. I think, I think I was on mute. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. You may start.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, board members, and Dr. Hairston. I just wanted to speak briefly about the superintendent's search. Dr. Hairston, I wish I was there in person. My wife is at a get-out-the-vote event, so I can't be there. And I do hope I get to see you again in person before you leave, but I just want to sincerely thank you for all of the work that you've done over the past 14 months. It's been really astonishing just to see how much you have accomplished since you've been here. And I was literally heartbroken when I got the report that you were leaving. It's really devastating that really losing such an amazing leader, although I understand your reasons, it's definitely painful to see this. As the board considers an interim superintendent, I really want to urge you that you do not look backwards and that we look forward. I have seen reports confirmed by the Winston-Salem Journal that Don Martin is being considered. And while I'm sure he had his reasons for instituting the school choice policy, it cannot be denied that it has really adversely affected a huge amount of our community and students. And I think that we really need a visionary moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ziesel. Sorry, thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Ryan Lee Runyon. And I'll just make reference again, you only have one minute. I know some calls are interrupted, and you may have some disconnection with my instructions, but just please be mindful, you only have one minute instead of three tonight. So we appreciate you accommodating us and being patient. Is Ms. Ryan Lee Runyon available? Okay, Mr. Adolfo Brusino?
Can you hear me?
Yes, is this Mr. Adolfo Brusino?
Yeah, that's Adolfo Brusino. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. I am here representing the North Carolina Congress of Latino Organizations, the Forsyth County Chapter. And I would like to just briefly tell you that we did a survey within members' organizations, and this is 87% of those parents surveyed. Prepare the Plan C, remote learning from home for all students, with additional support for families from the school district, with technology and assignments. Out of those 80% that support Plan C, 152, I'm sorry, 61% indicated a need for assistance from a bilingual social worker with technology assignments. 45% indicated a need for free meals. 76% indicated a need for devices and reliable internet connection. And 10% indicated other needs. I also would like to thank the board for providing interpretation at school board meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Brusinos.
Awareness of this service.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Again, make sure, just be aware that we only have one minute tonight because so many callers and folk that came face-to-face to speak, and we appreciate your patience. Next, we have Mr. Kevin Crockett.
Good evening. I'm the father to three children in the school system, and I advocate for a safe return to school when the level of risk is appropriate for everyone involved, our kids, their teachers, administrators, and staff. This board has chosen to use the CDC decision-making indicators to guide your plans for school reopening. And while we'll never be 100% free from the risk of infection, these indicators allow us to make an objective analysis. What the indicators do not do, and what the board is called upon to do, is determine what an acceptable level of risk is for our community. As we've seen today, our indicators are marching steadily in the wrong direction. Forsyth County has now entered the highest-risk category for incidence rate and higher-risk category for our percent of tests that are positive. What the board must do is set a standard for what level of risk they will accept. This will allow our administrators to execute against an objective-based protocol. My vote, we should open if and only if zero risk indicators are in the highest category, regardless of trend, and no more than one risk indicator is in the higher category, and that trend must be decreasing. Finally, there's been a lot of discussion about the limited risk of complications to children from COVID. That fails to recognize the impact to our thousands of teachers and staff who may be at higher risk and the tens of thousands of family members of everyone in this country.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. We appreciate your time. Next, we have Bishop Todd Fulton. And I'll just remind again that we only have one minute tonight because we are trying to accommodate as many possible during this time period, and we appreciate your patience and understanding. Bishop Todd Fulton. You may be on mute. If you're listening to us, we can't hear you. Okay, Pastor Tembila Covington. Again, we only have one minute tonight, just in case you did not hear those instructions. Thank you for your patience. Pastor Tembila Covington? You may need to unmute yourself. They're saying that you're connected. Pastor, Pastor Tembila Covington?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I don't think you, Tembila Covington. To whom are we speaking to now?
No, I'm sorry, this is Trutanic. I think I was muted. I'm sorry about that.
Give me your last name again?
Can I speak?
Okay. Ms. Trutanic?
Yes.
Okay, you may start. Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry about that. Good evening, members of the board. I'm an educator in Winston-Salem, and I want to express concerns of other educators and community members. I hope that each board member votes to continue to delay in-person instruction per the COVID nineteen committee's recommendation. Now is not the time to reopen schools. Four issues have not been answered. The first is the cleaning equipment and PPE provided for teachers and staff. Many teachers have said it's not enough. Secondly, there is a lack of clarity on the transportation issue. And lastly, there's still... And lastly, there's still poor ventilation in many school buildings that are mostly black-and-brown schools. This pandemic is getting worse. A large majority of North Carolinians favor a cautious approach to reopening. As was stated, Rockingham County just voted for Plan C. And let's do what Rockingham County did and remain in Plan C. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Bishop Fulton, this is Chair Woodbury, and I think we got disconnected. I just wanted to make sure you are aware of the accommodations tonight for just one minute to speak, to try to make sure we got as many people as we could during this time period, and we appreciate your patience. Bishop Fulton? Okay. Pastor Tembila Covington? Pastor Covington?
Hi, this is Ryan Lee Runyon, if I can get back into the queue to speak.
Yes, you may start.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. I'm the mother of two high school students, one of whom is a freshman who has just come back into the district after eight years of the charter school. And although my children are not scheduled to return to campus until January of 2021, our family has already been asked to indicate our selection of hybrid or fully remote schooling for the second semester of the school year. We don't make this choice lightly. Remote learning is not ideal, and it's not the first choice of our teenagers. One of our children has a learning difference, and remote learning makes things even more challenging. However, we don't feel that two on-campus days every other week with a hybrid option will make a remarkable difference for either of our children. Our teachers are working incredibly hard. But we don't anticipate much change in our students' day-to-day school experiences as teachers balance remote and face-to-face instruction. Additionally, COVID numbers have risen steadily over the last month, and we're heading into the holiday season when the spread of the virus will likely continue to increase. As we take this into consideration, we also have to consider our extended family, which includes four grandparents who are high-risk due to age.
Thank you, Ms. Runyon.
Good evening. This is Pastor Covington. Do you hear me?
We can. I wanted to make sure, Pastor Covington, you are aware of the one-minute adjustment for tonight. So all comments are just limited to one minute to try to accommodate everybody that was wanting to speak, and we appreciate your patience.
Yes, ma'am, madam chair. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My message today is on behalf of the Ministers Conference of Winston-Salem and Vicinity. In making my comment on the agenda items, superintendent search process, I would like to leave you with two questions to consider. Number one, how much consideration and weight did the school board place upon all comments and suggestions during the community discussion sessions in the search for our current superintendent? Number two, what are the lessons learned from that process? And how do we find ourselves here at a number of moments of transition for a new leadership at a most critical time? I hope the school board is transparent with the search and decision-making process. I hope the school board considers a candidate who has the experience, who is trusted by the community, brings continuity and stability, has built strong relationships with community stakeholders, connects with students, staff, and community, someone who has the desire, professional expertise, and the drive to reach for every student's success a long-term basis in Forsyth County, North Carolina.
Thank you. Ms. Brooke Farmer? Brooke Farmer? Nicole Williams?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Brooke Farmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this...
No, this is Nicole Williams.
Okay, thank you. You can start.
Hello. All right, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. So I'm speaking on behalf of being a parent and also a grandparent of children in Forsyth County School. At this moment, due to our current circumstances, where the COVID-19 is lying and how fast this is moving to a high level, we don't need to have our children back in school. Our children need to be safe. Our teachers need to be safe. Our parents, grandparents, kids may not be susceptible to the disease. However, they can be carriers. And when they come home to their parents, like me, who has an autoimmune deficiency, therefore, I can get sick and I can die. So that's something the board needs to consider. It's not just about the kids. It's about the students, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the custodians, the facilities specialists. It's about everybody. Y'all need to think about that before you say, "Let's go send these kids back to school." Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tiffany Kratzer? Dr. Tiffany Kratzer?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. I just want...
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, before you start, I just want to let you know that there is a limitation to one minute. I don't know if you heard that, and I just wanted to make sure you were clear that you only have one minute so that we could accommodate as many people as possible tonight, and we appreciate your patience.
Sure. So I'm addressing you today as a pediatrician in our community, but more importantly, as a concerned mom with two children in elementary school. I understand the teachers who are concerned about returning to the classroom, and I can relate to this fear because I was there when I returned to the hospital and every day when I examined patients. I was scared of putting myself on the front line and the potential consequences for my family. However, now we have effective ways to mitigate the transmission of COVID, and it is in the interest of both the children and teachers in Forsyth County School to return to school under the previously approved safe return plan. This plan includes masks, social distancing, reduced capacity, all of which you've worked so hard for. As a pediatrician, I urge the members of the board to consider the severe consequences of COVID-19 in our children, which include an alarming and horrifying increase in both instances of child abuse and mental health. We need to consider the widening educational gap between our districts and districts across North Carolina, Wade County, and Mecklenburg County as they are returning to schools and what that means for our children falling behind. I'm asking respectfully that you put our children's education first and the local experts, the CDC's recommendations, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, stating that the health of our children and teachers will not be endangered by live education.
Thank you, Dr. Kratzer. Next, we have, I think, we're still waiting on from my list, Bishop Fulton and Ms. Farmer.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Is this Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a parent, and I want to speak to those that have been laying the blame for a delayed student return at the feet of teachers who don't feel safe going back in the classroom right now. This community is not showing any indication that it is able and ready to make the small sacrifices needed to safely get kids back in school by consistently wearing a mask. Small and large indoor gatherings are becoming more frequent and leading to clusters. Most of our teachers and staff live in this county and see all this playing out in front of them, so I understand their concerns. If people in this community are willing to put everyone around them at risk by not following basic guidelines, then why should we expect they would magically be compliant with schools reopen? While the board can't control this community, you can show leadership by encouraging and modeling COVID safety protocols like mask-wearing and avoiding large gatherings. You can also show leadership by owning the fact that it is ultimately your responsibility to make your teachers and staff feel heard, respected, and safe. This school system has a shortage of well-qualified educators going into this pandemic, and it has only gotten worse. There's lots of room for improvement in this district, and it will not happen without well-qualified educators willing to show up each and every day, in person or virtually, to serve our children.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
We missed Tiffany Kratzer.
We got her.
She did? Okay.
Yeah.
How about Alicia Smith? Michelle Jordan.
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, Alicia Smith? I thought you were saying you were calling her. Alicia Smith? Michelle Jordan? Michelle Jordan? Michelle Jordan? Bishop Todd Fulton? Bishop Todd Fulton? Okay, thank you. That concludes our public comments on the agenda items. Our next agenda item is discussion items. And first, we have Ms. Andrea Gillis, our Chief Financial Officer, who will present to us the budget resolution.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, board members, and Dr. Hairston. Tonight, I am here to present the 2021 proposed budget. The budget amounts reflected here are based on the latest information we have. As I mentioned in the work session, the budget could change. And some budgets did change slightly in the operating budget. As I present, I will notate those changes. The most significant change will be in the child nutrition budget. So as you see here, the numbers are slightly different than they were in the previous presentation. The state budget is up $600,000. We got additional funds from the state for more CARES Act funds that came through the state. The federal grants budget is also up another $600,000 because we got more finalized numbers on our federal dollars. The other restricted and special revenue budget also went up about $1.9 million due to additional federal, not federal, additional grants. The capital outlay, county appropriation numbers stayed the same. Capital outlay for other local funds, including bond proceeds, stayed the same. The most significant change you'll see is child nutrition budget. That went down $4.3 million. And I'll talk about that later. The total proposed operating budget, as you can see compared to the budget request, is pretty much the same for the state funds. The federal funds is up significantly due to $18.9 million in CARES Act funds. The local current expense county appropriation is down due to, you know, the budget we requested was above the funding formula, and this is based on the funding formula with the additional funds we received for the sales tax revenue included. The current expense of the local revenue is down because right now we're basing it on what we know that we got last year. And then the other restricted special revenue is slightly higher based on the grants that we currently have. The proposed budget highlights include the state mandated increases, which are the 31 and 1/2 additional teacher positions for House Bill 90 class size reduction, those that come to fruition. The retirement rate for 2021 increased 21.68%, which is a 10% increase over the 2019-20 rate of 19.7%. The state health insurance premium increased to 63.26 annually, which is a 0.3% increase over the 1920 premium of 63.06. The budget also included a 1% step increase for certified staff, which includes teacher support staff and assistant principals. And the state budget also included a 351-time bonus for teachers and certified support staff. Other salary items included in the budget are the county appropriation base that was reduced by $3.7 million for the reserve for supplements allotted in 2019-20. That was done before applying the formula. The county provided $11 million in sales tax revenue from the quarter cent sales tax increase that will fund the local teacher supplement for 2021. And the budget also includes a one-time 3% bonus for non-certified staff. And this bonus will be funded with one-time savings due to school closure related to COVID, current COVID-19 pandemic. Next, here is the snapshot of the county budget. We started with our base budget of $125.9 million, less the reserve for supplement of 3.7. We transferred $2.2 million from capital outlay funds. We had reductions of 4.3 million. Our total required salaries and benefit increases were 1.5 million, and we had a quarter cent sales tax of 11 million, which gave us a total proposed county operating budget of $132,689.072, which is an increase of $6,775,338 over the prior year. Now I'm going to pull up the budget resolution. Okay. Okay, so now we have the budget resolution by purpose code, and I'll just go over the totals. So the total current expense budget is $134,289.072, and that's comprised of the county appropriation and other local revenues, which is primarily fines and forfeitures. The state current expense, I mean, the state public school fund appropriation is $364,106,922, and that's pretty much all state public school fund revenue. The federal grants appropriation is $71,664,877.91, and that is comprised of the various federal grants that we have received allotments for to date. The capital outlay appropriation is $139,186,698, and that is comprised of $3.966 million in county appropriation and $135.2 million in local revenues, including bond proceeds, which is the carryover of bonds that were approved last year. The next budget is the other restricted fund appropriation of $16.996 million, and that is primarily consists of $2.3 million in state allocations, $4.3 in federal, and $10.33 in other local revenues, which includes grants and partnership grants. The next section is the one that changed significantly since the last time we reviewed the budget. So child nutrition fund appropriation is $24.9 million. And the revenues to balance that budget would be federal grants of $16.9, local revenues of $3 million, and fund balance of $4.9 million to balance the budget. Now, the child nutrition budget is a straight profit and loss budget. The department is dependent on revenues from meals served to support expenses. The revenues come in the form of student meals purchased, federal reimbursements for supper meals, after-school snacks, and free meals served from the USDA, and supplemental sales such as bottled water, chips, cookies, and extra entree purchases. With the school closure, revenues are not being realized. The projected revenue from sales is anticipated to be 2.5 million lower than the pre-COVID proposed budget. The federal reimbursements are anticipated to be 6.7 million lower. Expenses have been reduced to offset those losses of about $4.2 million, but that still leaves $4.9 million loss. Some of the reductions in expenses include reduction of temporary services for labor, reduction in uniform purchases, only buy necessary supply material purchases, and no new hiring efforts in using the staff that we currently have. And, you know, reduction of labor. If people resign or retire, we will not refill those jobs to offset the losses. Luckily, there is $11 million in child nutrition fund balance available. This is separate from the district fund balance. Child nutrition fund balance is generated from year-end revenues for the purposes of balancing the budget during a year with deficit or during a time when there's a governmental shutdown and reimbursements are not being paid. We have discussed this fund balance appropriation with the auditors and feel comfortable with this. However, given the significant change, we wanted to give the opportunity for the board to review and ask questions. So we have moved the adoption of the budget to the next board meeting. Are there any questions?
So Andrea, I understand that the child nutrition fund balance is different from the general fund balance that we speak of more often. From that, so we have approximately $11 million?
Between 11 and 12. The audit's not done this year. We had about $12 million last year in the 2019 budget, but they haven't done the audit for this year. But we're thinking it's going to be still around the $11, $12 million mark.
And so if we, and I know at this point, it's kind of, I think, maybe worst-case scenario. We just don't know.
We don't know, right.
So taking that $4.9 million out seems like it makes sense to do or at least appropriate it. If we do that and the revenues are up, we'll put that back in the fund balance.
Right, it'll fall to fund balance at the end of the year. So we appropriate to balance the budget, I'm sorry. Appropriate the fund balance to balance the budget, and we'll be monitoring monthly the revenues and expenses. We'll be bringing that budget to you every month. Once we adopt the budget, we'll be bringing child nutrition budget to you, in the profit and loss statement, I mean, so that you'll be able to see where we are. And we'll be also monitoring expenses and making sure we try to cut where we can. You know, I'm working closely with Lauren and Caleb and the child nutrition staff in order to make sure that, you know, we adhere to the budget... in order to make sure that, you know, we adhere to the budget that we're going to propose. But, and we're hoping that things will get better. But based on the fact that, you know, we don't have revenues for student meals right now, it's hard to anticipate how many people will actually participate once school does reopen. And so having said that, you know, we are lucky that we have that fund balance available to make sure we offset the budget. And, you know, the auditors feel very comfortable with us appropriating this fund balance. But having said that, I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to review and to ask questions and then push the vote back until the next meeting.
And thank you for doing that, I appreciate that.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Effig McMillan, our Executive Director of Equity, to discuss the equity advisory bylaws.
Good evening Chair Woodbury, Dr. Harrison, and other board members. At the last policy committee meeting, I brought forth the Equity Advisory Council bylaws, and there was quite a bit of discussion. And one of the ending recommendations was to put it forth for a seven-day public comment. So following that seven-day public comment and the discussion by the board, there were just a few revisions, just to let you know, there was no public comments that came in. So the adjustments that were made were solely based on the board's discussion. So I just want to point out those few changes. So if we look under Roman numeral two, just here at the end of the second line where it says practices with the goal of achieving equity. Initially, it said working towards. The language was changed to align more with the language in the equity policy. And then if we look under the purpose, which is Roman numeral three, and we look specifically at A, there was quite a bit of discussion about the independent authority or decision-making power. So that language was included. And then last but not least, there was discussion about membership and wanting to make sure that there could be board member representation on the committee. And so if we look under Section 4, Membership, Number 1, where it had included members that we would be seeking out through our application process, it also included representation of board members. So that would be included specifically in the bylaws. And so those were the main things that came out of the conversation, and that's how it was addressed in the bylaws. And so it's on the agenda to move for action. But at this time, are there any questions?
Yes ma'am, Ms. McMillan, I have a question. And I may have missed it in reading it, but it, the bylaws talk about a chairman, but I did not see how a chairman would, how that position came about, whether it's elected from the board or wherever. So I was just wondering how, what procedures for a chairman that committee will have?
For, under Section 6, for the duties, are you talking specifically about the chair?
Yes, it talks about the duties, but it doesn't say how a chair will be named.
Yeah, we didn't specifically put how it would be named because that would come under the advisement of the superintendent and the board for the chair of who would be chairing that committee. I'm hoping that within this first biennium of this advisory, that it would be the Equity Office as we began to lead the work. And then as we move forward, the board would appoint who would chair that committee.
Okay, so do we need to put that in those bylaws, or will that be?
Whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I think it, it takes any question out of, you know, we may see transition, we will see transition in that. And so I think, I think we probably need to spell that out so there's no question as to how that process is going to work.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions or suggestions? So I will make those changes this evening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Attorney Jenkins, our Chief Legal Counsel, and Andrew Craft, the Chief Accountability and Equity Officer, to discuss calendar changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Harrison. I bring to you a recommendation from a group of principals regarding two small calendar changes. I want to emphasize that these changes do not affect students at all, no impact on students. First of all, there's a recommendation to make January 8th a reserved-for schools day. That means it's not central office training, but it's training provided by schools. Secondly, to make December 22nd a B or break day, and then replace what that was an R day and make January 7th an R day. I'll show you on the calendar here, and then we can talk a little bit about why it is that they wanted this to happen. So you'll see there in January that currently January 8th is an RC day. They requested to make that an RS day. The reason for that is so the principals have time to work with their schools, to work with the teachers in their schools. So those principals are not having their teachers pulled away for working with central office staff for training. And then the other suggestion you see there for January 7th, currently a B day, a break day. They'd like to take that R day from December, December 22nd, and move it to January 7th. Are there any questions about those changes? Okay, thank you.
Dion, you didn't have anything to present with him? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Hamad Attashbar, Executive Director of Student Assignments. He's going to have some discussion with us around the student assignment priorities.
Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury, Board Members, Dr. Harrison. So we know we've got a new middle school coming on board next school year, 2021-22. And this gives us an opportunity to look at other assignment data related to our county. And now we're working with an independent group named ORED out of NC State. They provide school planning solutions that are based around data. So, but in order to accomplish their work, they typically need a set of priorities that drive their, you know, as driving factors for their work when they're districting or redistricting schools. So we presented the members of the board with a list of priorities from ORED and asked them to rank those numerically for us. And then we picked the top four per ORED to be able to send it back to them. So we're asking for approval tonight to use those top four priorities so ORED can complete the work. And then we'll be able to present the recommendations to the Board of Education in November. So the priorities that were sent to us by ORED are balancing utilization. And this basically means that you open a school up, you want to not overcrow it right off the start, and also plan for future growth. And so you want to make sure you have that balance there for students and the capacity of the school. Maximizing student proximity to schools, demographic balancing, maintaining feeder patterns, respecting neighborhoods, minimizing reassignment impact, facility aging, conditioning, and security, access to programs, financial impact, mindfulness of family input, and busing efficiency and logistics. And once we ranked those, the top four that were selected were maximizing student proximity to schools, balancing utilization, respecting neighborhoods, and maintaining feeder patterns. Any questions for me?
Hamad, I had one. So what, were there any, so there's nine of us. Were these four just by far the top picks? I know that would be a question, you know, if there was anything close, or?
Absolutely, absolutely. And those, no, those were the top picks when we ranked them all. Of course, access to programming, we got other efforts that we're working on for that, to make sure programming is available to all students. And then also looking at, let me get back here to the previous one. And then mindful of family input, you know, we have that choice survey out, and we have our choice committee. So we got those things also happening, but these were just priorities, just so they can kind of plan out the district for at least the Robin Hood Road School and, you know, other efforts around the counties.
Okay, do you remember, I mean, so these are just by far, by clear, nothing?
Correct, yes ma'am, exactly. When we ranked them, those were the top four.
And just, not just because I'm curious as to, could we email to the board, like, what the rankings ended up being from top to bottom, just so we would see the whole picture?
Yes ma'am, absolutely. You know, we did those on paper. What I'll do is I'll take pictures of all those and share it with the board.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Board Member Motzinger, I think has a question.
Yes. My concern was that we saw a whole lot of information and did ranking. What I would really like before we say we're set on this set of criteria is a conversation with the full board, whether it's a Zoom call or... Where we really talk about are these the four things that we collectively agree are our top priorities? And part of the reason for that, I know when we've had lots of discussions previously, for example, putting together a bond. I want to be influenced by and want to be able to influence other board members because I would rather, before we set this in stone, actually have a conversation and say, are these the four things that we all together agree on? And that would be my request, that the board actually have a real conversation as a board together to say, are these exactly the four things we want? Because in many ways, there, a lot of them are repetitions, right? Respecting neighborhoods and maximizing student proximity, and maintaining feeder patterns, that in some ways, we've picked all the same things. And I'm wondering if we want to look at anything else and if a conversation amongst us might change what we picked as the top four. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Motzinger. I think that either tonight or at another board meeting, we could, you know, dedicate, I guess, more time around it. I think what's being presented tonight is the data that they did collect based on small groups so that we didn't violate any open meeting laws. I think that we also have the choice committee, and that may be a time where although those members on choice are sort of leading, that may be an opportunity, just like with COVID, where we all really participate and try to have further conversation around the top four priorities. But I think that that's what we're trying to do right now, is have some discussion. I guess, are you asking that you want more time for us to come back and discuss this?
Well, that's what I would really, I, so we had a lot of interesting information in our small groups, but we didn't talk even amongst the three of us, what are you seeing and hearing here? It was more, fill out your priorities. And I would really like to have a rich conversation with my fellow board members about, does this really address what we're thinking of? And the reason for wanting to make, to stress that is I believe these are supposed to go to ORED after this meeting. And so I think this is happening very quickly. And I'm trying to understand if these four priorities are focusing on only, how do we draw the lines for the new middle school? Or are they going to have bigger implications for our district as a whole?
So, might I speak? The timeline was sort of, it was truncated by COVID, the lack of ability to get ORED back in. And so they have a really, really tight timeline. And the purpose of the small groups was to really take some time to understand what was happening. The priorities simply allow them to run metrics. And then once they run the lines, we of course have to have public hearings. And those public hearings give an opportunity for the community to weigh in, as well as board members at another level. Primarily, what really pushed our timeline, unlike other districts, was the choice and magnet process. We really struggled with that because we know we have a choice and magnet process that starts in December.
Yes ma'am, mid-December.
So that really pushes us a lot. Now, timelines don't mean you should make hurried decisions. It just means it's a timeline. And if you'd like to engage in, we had the small groups to afford opportunities to ask questions and to see. But nothing is set in stone until, really, until the public hearings are heard from the community. The priorities actually came from you all. We didn't weigh in on the priorities, they were all you all's priorities. And I'll ask Hamad to send you all the chart of how you rated them. We didn't weigh in at all. And so I think it might be a good idea to be thinking about the school. And now, if you do not want the school to engage in choice, so you can direct Hamad to push back the choice process, which delays allocations, delays hiring. It's a lot involved, more than just attendance lines. But I agree, there needs to be rich conversation around attendance lines before you make decisions like this. So the priorities simply allow him, them to start to kind of draw the lines and get some processes going. So you can discuss what you want to see. Without the priorities, he really can't draw the attendance lines. And so they simply allow a starting point. So if you'd like to, I mean, the fifth is coming up, we don't have to have the fifth. You can actually have a call board meeting during the day and come back in as a board and look at the results based on these priorities and make some changes as a full board. Of course, you have to announce the meeting, which is fine, all of that. But without any priorities, again, we are way behind. And so I would suggest, if you're interested, allow us an opportunity to use the ones that you all have identified. These are your priorities, not ours. And give some samples out there before we go into public hearings. Have a full board meeting with the community would be aware of it, so they can come in and you can have that dialogue. And then they can move. Right now, they're at a standstill, they can't do anything at this point. And then the next time, you'll come together as a full board for this activity will be November. And then you have to have public hearings, probably not in December because it's Christmas. You'll probably have to have them in January and February, which means that your whole process for choice and allocations will push back.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And I do understand all the time constraints and the COVID has really put, has made everything more difficult. And I just, when I see those four priorities, in some ways, they look so similar that I would like us to have a conversation together about, you know, there's nothing about demographic balancing in there, or, which might be a counter to some of the, let's just keep going the way we've been going. And I'd like, so that's a place where I'd like us to be able to have a better conversation. So, thank you, thank you for your thoughtful response.
So what I will say is that in my session, just to be clear with the community, I think that those in my session, we did have a lot of back and forth and rich discussion. But, you know, there were a few sessions and, you know, I'm sure although different, the same information given, we may have had, you know, definitely different experiences. And I do understand Board Member Motzinger's, you know, concerns around, you know, the priorities by way of maybe some clarity right now around. They look really similar, but Hamad, could you maybe try to define for us those distinct differences? Or, you know, compare the four priorities we have?
Absolutely, yes ma'am, I'll be glad to. All right, so maximizing student proximity to school just means basically be mindful of the distance a student has to travel. of the distance a student has to travel to get to school. You don't want them to go past another school, for example, to get to the school. Has a lot to do with geography. Balancing utilization is, as I mentioned before, is really making sure, looking into the future sort of with projections. So when you open up a school, you don't want it to either immediately be at capacity or over capacity or in, in the, in the future, um, having to put pods and modulators, um, there just to handle their capacity. So, um, that relates to that. Respecting neighborhoods means, of course, you don't want to split a neighborhood up and have them half go to one school and half go to the other school. And then maintaining feeder patterns is really something we've talked about before is students going to one middle school or one elementary school together. And then from middle school, they get split up and they have to go to, you know, and just kind of separate it from their friends, um, going up that way. So, um, although I, I totally understand, Ms. Mott Singer's, they do sound similar, but they actually sort of complement each other in, as far as that goes. And when I was talking to the folks at ORED who do this, you know, with all the, uh, school systems, the majority of them around our state, these are really the top ones they typically look at when they're, um, trying to, you know, create boundaries for, for a new school. So, um, I, I do get it though. They kind of do similar. They, they, but they actually work hand in hand in, in kind of creating a, a balance. And, um, and again, I know with the access to programs, we got some other efforts going on as, um, you know, allowing more access to programs, um, that was on there. And then, um, you know, we do have that choice survey for the, uh, community input in our choice committee that, that, you know, has that all going there with that.
We'll, we'll send the, we'll send the survey out.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. I sure will, absolutely.
Yes. So will, will it be possible, I'm just thinking back to what, um, Board Member Mott Singer said, are we going to see what they do before it goes out for public committee, um, for public meetings or whatever? Are we going to see that so we can kind of see if it's, you know, what true, true to what we, what we all had in mind?
Right, so the plan, the calendar, um, says on the 30th, um, they would get your feedback. They'd run the models. They run the models based on the priorities. So they, they run their, um, models based on these priorities that you select. And, um, you know, you, when we talk, I, I, I'm not sure that demographic, I heard demographic came up because the county is, um, you know, majority. So I, I think that, um, uh, so anyway, they run the models. Uh, the, the, this process is that the plan is presented to the Board of Education for approval. So, so you would have to approve it once they ran. They can't run the models without the priorities. And then, once you approve the model, then they come back and you give us, we ask for permission to take it out to public hearings. Once you have public feedback, adjustments are agreed upon by the board for final approval. And so those, um, are made incrementally, um, and, and that's the process for. So you, you approve the model. We have, you don't approve it for, yes, this is a go. It's, yes, this is a go for public feedback. Get the feedback, make the adjustments, and then approve the final attendance zones.
But at that time, if we saw something that, from some of these priorities that we thought was really lacking in those plans, at that, at that time before it went out for public comment, we would have an opportunity to go back and to remedy that?
Yes, once you look at it and you might say, well, this doesn't reflect, this doesn't reflect what we're thinking. And then you have conversation around, well, maybe we need to look at this more. They can run the model again, but the goal is to have the public hearing because when they see it, you're going to have tons of feedback anyway. And then that's a time to go back and reflect. So it's a process and I don't think we thought about, um, the timeline, I think, was bring final approval either in March or April.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's a long process. It's not a defined, um, this is going back and forth with monthly updates.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Thank you.
Thank you also. It's appreciated.
Next, we have the Superintendent Search Process Overview with Deion Jenkins, our Chief Legal Counselor.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. Um, the purpose of this, the discussion this afternoon is just to provide for your benefit, um, a, a, a brief overview about what you can expect in the Superintendent Search Process. I included in the materials kind of a, a, a broad step-by-step overview in the process. I intentionally did not include a timeline because that could change. So, um, it really depends on, you know, what next steps the board takes. Does the board want to, um, hire a search firm, a search firm and so forth? So, once a vacancy occurs in the superintendency, um, the next step naturally in the process is to select an interim superintendent. And so, um, at that point, probably the next most important decision is deciding whether or not you'd like to hire an external search firm to assist you in the Superintendent Search Process. And if you recall from 2019, we hired, or you hired, the North Carolina School Board Association and utilized their Superintendent Search, uh, search services in the most recent, um, in the most recent 2019 search. If you are inclined, you can, um, request in kind of an informal RFP process to ask for proposals. Or you could do a more formal RFP process and you could, you know, develop an RFP and publish it and give, um, firms an opportunity to submit a more detailed proposal. Um, another option is you could decide not to use an external search firm. Um, that's not a legal requirement, but that is an option for you. So that's why it's noted with an asterisk there, that that's an optional step. Once a decision is made about whether or not to hire an external search firm, typically the next step in the process, as, um, as it was in 2019, is to solicit community feedback where you could either send a survey out or have listening sessions to solicit, um, comments from the public about what qualities they'd like to see in a superintendent, what goals they'd like to see accomplished and so forth and so on. I do still have copies of the feedback from the public that you received, um, back in 2019 and I'd be happy to share that with you at any point in this process. And so, once, um, the community feedback phase in the process, um, is complete, then the board may elect to review or revise the job announcement and then publish the vacancy announcement. Again, if you decide to hire a, a search firm, they will typically assist in this process. They have networks and systems and avenues across the country that they can advertise for the, the vacancy, but they typically would assist in this process. And then, once the application period closes, that's when you would start the interview process, the initial screening of the applications and, and then scheduling of interviews. Typically, you do see more than one round of interviews in a Superintendent Search process. But again, it's not required. And so you ti- you typically do see at least two rounds of interviews. The first round and then a round of finalists. And if necessary, an additional round. But ultimately, you would make your final selection and then coordinate announcement of the new superintendent. And so in most cases, the process takes anywhere between four to six months. Again, it depends on whether or not you decide to go through a more formal RFP process, RFP process for a search firm or whether or not you, you decide that you want to handle it sort of quote-unquote in-house using internal resources to solicit, um, new candidates. So I provided for you, um, additional information regarding some executive search firms that specialize in positions for K-12 institutions. The North Carolina School Boards Association, the entity that you utilized in 2019. I've also included a link to the areas of their websites where they talk about the services that they offer, if you'd like to go back and review that. BWP and Associates, which is another firm that, from what I can tell, specializes in only public school institutions. And they've done a lot of work in, um, multiple states around the, around the country. And, uh, they appear to be either all or the majority of superintendent searches and as, as opposed to other positions. And the last three, Isaacson Miller, McPherson Jacobson, and Hazard Young Ette are firms that were considered and reviewed during the last search process. They're also national firms. But, uh, again, they've been used by other entities. Uh, I think Charlotte Mecklenburg used, um, I believe they used McPherson and Jacobson in one of their searches in 2016. But these, these are additional options for you to consider as well. And again, I've included links to areas on their website where they have additional information about the services that they offer. So I think, um, what's recommended as far as the most immediate next steps, obviously, once an interim superintendent is named and appointed, then, um, a decision about whether or not you want to utilize an external search firm or if you'd like to, um, handle that procedure in-house using internal resources. I do not have it on the agenda for an action item tonight. Um, I figured there probably would need to be some additional conversation and consideration. However, if there is a consensus, at least regarding this most immediate next step, you, you can certainly amend the agenda to take action on that tonight. But, um, I just was not sure of the, the will and the pleasure of the board. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have about the Superintendent Search Process in general.
Deion, do you recall the previous deadline we used around the publication of the vacancy? So was it 30 days, 60 days?
As far as when applications were due?
Correct.
I, I do not recall the exact, um, date, but I, I would say it's usually around 30 days. Somewhere in that vicinity.
I guess my second question is, although it, according to your presentation, the immediate steps, you know, surrounds selection of interim and those other three things, I, in my opinion, I guess I would ask for your guidance. It seems to me that publishing the vacancy so that people officially know and can start to apply can be something done that, um, maybe this board could agree on tonight to go ahead and, and, and publish the vacancy. And do, do we want 30 days, 60 days from now? Um, but.
Chair Woodbury, wouldn't we kind of have to have some before? I, I think, I understand what you're saying about the vacancy, but like, who do I apply to? And all that means we probably need to have a, a, a firm picked out that, that would handle it or we would have to do it in-house.
So, yeah, I, I agree with that. I think the last time, we did get some people to send us, um, resumes directly to us and through North Carolina School Board Association. That's kind of was my thought pattern, but, uh, I see where you're coming from too.
I, I, um, so if we could, um, have, have some time to where we could talk about this in a, you know, a setting where we're a little bit more having a conversation versus here in this like semi-circle, um, I think that would be, um, good to go back and maybe look at the, the timeline that we had last time and to look at the process, especially around the community engagement piece. Did we like the, you know, did we feel like the feedback was, um, what, you know, just, was that process, um, good? Or do we want to tweak some of that and, and, you know, kind of streamline? It hasn't been that long ago that we've done this. Kind of streamline that and make it, um, and I would like to see us be a little more intentional on gathering the, the feedback from the community, um, from different areas of the community. What I remember from that is that many times when we were there, it was the same, um, people that were engaging. And so I, I think if we can be intentional on hearing from more voices, um, that would, that would be, you know, so, so a time for all of us to be able to kind of talk about that as we move forward, you know, sooner than later, I think would, would be good. And then the other piece to that is looking on the websites to some of the different firms. For some of them who have represented, um, uh, districts in North Carolina, was wondering if we could maybe reach out to that school district to just see, you know, what their experience was like and how recent that's been? Just, just to help us, um, un- understand. I know North Carolina School Board Association does several searches, but several of the other organizations have, have, have brought in, um, um, superintendents close to us and just, just to have some conversation about what, you know, what their board, um, felt like if that was a, a good, a good process.
I, I do have some of that information that I gathered from, um, the, the last time we did the search. And I, I know that at least for one of the entities on the list, they have not done any North Carolina searches since about, since at least 2015, if not before that. And, um, uh, for example, Hazard Young, they, um, Guilford County utilized their firm in 2016. And McPherson and Jacobson, um, they were utilized in Charlotte Mecklenburg in 2016 and Wake County in 2012. And so I would, I, I'm happy to go back and do some additional research to see if there's anything more recent. But, um, that was the data that I was able to gather, um, back in 2019.
Thank you, Deion.
Thank you. Uh, so I will just, um, at risk of sounding like a cliche, an email was sent to the board, I think, from Deion or from our previous timeline. And so, um, Deion, you may have to resend it so it comes up to the top. I would ask if this board can consider giving some direction to Deion or, you know, uh, HR services around when we would want to sit down and talk about when we're going to publish, what the deadline, and then some of those other components that, um, needed some immediate, um, attention. I guess I'm just of the, um, thought of the, the publishing of the, the position since we know it's available and putting a, a, a period of when folk can apply could, you know, be as immediate as I guess when we decided it. But anybody have any thoughts of a?
I mean, I, I think, uh, you know, soon, next, this, you know, next week. As soon as, as soon as we can do that, I think if we can, um, review again that timeline that, that, that Deion had sent us, but then maybe to just be able to talk about some of those things and look at it again, um, and, and see if, you know, if that was realistic. I think the, the biggest thing is to, to look around that and, and also to, um, the conversation around, uh, uh, of picking a firm to handle it. And, and then I think also having, uh, a meeting with them. And, you know, this is what, you know, this is their business that they do all the time. And then help us also make sure that we craft out, um, the right timeline.
So, Deion, could you send us out, um, an email to request when we could work something in next week? And then, um, you know, Lisa or Ms. Sugg, someone can kind of coordinate that and we can get the?
Yes, and, and I'll resend that, um, timeline from the last, from the last.
It's already sent.
Oh, okay.
She's sending it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last discussion item is the Phase Reentry Plan Delay for Students with Tricia McManus, our Deputy Superintendent, and Jennifer Corso, Director of School Nurses.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good evening, Madam Chair, board members and Dr. Harrison. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide an overview of the presentation provided to the BOE COVID Subcommittee last week. So we, we had a longer presentation. This is going to be modified this evening for a very quick overview. And so we're going to get started. The purpose of this presentation was to actually inform the board and the public about school readiness for reopening and to provide some information about common expectations across all schools and then areas where schools could actually have a little bit more, uh, decision-making. And so with that, I'm going to go quickly through these slides because you've seen them. But basically, the, the first thing is that all of our schools had facilities audits. Once they actually received an, an expectation checklist of what had to happen in their facilities, every school then had an audit. And so they were rated and they were scored. And we've actually gone back and, and corrected any areas. And every school's goal is to have 100% audit. So any area deficiency is being corrected. And also then, um, schools have attended very specific training. It's been weekly. COVID coordinators have been trained. And so the training has been very extensive. This was another, um, discussion item last week. We talked about facility expectation. We talked about facility expectations. So if you go to any of our schools, you're going to see six feet floor markings for social distancing. You're going to see student desks organized in a certain way in our classrooms. You're going to see cleaning schedules that are very specific throughout each building, PPE that's been assigned to every school. And I know that Lauren also explained last week about that PPE that is out in our schools. And then also the designated holding space that every school was given clear guidelines around. We also then talked about instructional expectations. And so this was an area that folks had questions about. And so we talked about that we are still following our instructional framework. And if you see the items on this slide, students still will have interventions if they need small group instruction. They will have manipulatives. Everything will just be bagged individually for safety. But instruction will continue at the level that our teachers are used to delivering and our students are used to receiving. Schedules and transitions. We also talked about how intentional our principals and their leadership teams and their teacher teams have been on planning schedules that are aligned for staggered times. And that's a dismissal, transitions between classrooms, and also keeping cohorts together as much as possible. And so you will see every school with very clear schedules. And this is specifically really elementary and middle since those were the first ones that were going to be returning. If you look at each of our schools, every school had a team of teachers and leaders who were designing these plans. And you can see that every school, we've had training for COVID coordinators and student screening teams, the nurse extenders. We actually have 19 nurse extenders and they actually started this week in our schools. So they're helping schools make sure that, again, there's another layer of COVID support in our schools as we speak. And then we also talked about other procedural expectations. So you can see the expectations around masks. You know, we really need everyone in schools to be following these procedures with wearing masks and with social distancing at all times to avoid spreading. But you can see some of the other things that are common across all schools, hand sanitizer stations, standard signage. And so, and then we also have very specific protocols for contact tracing, what should happen if someone has either been exposed or actually tested positive. We had two principals present. If you remember, we had Jefferson Middle, Principal Shane O'Neil. Here are some pictures from his campus along with the schedule that he created. And the schedule, again, was very intentional, created with his team to make sure there's plenty of time in between classes, time for students that are learning from home or from in the classroom to be served. And then this was Ashley and Principal Janelle Gatling, and she spoke as well. Here were some pictures from her room, from her school. And then we talked about the purpose of Flex Wednesdays and that mid of the, middle of the weekday where we could do some deep cleaning between cohorts. And we also talked about that what that would start when students return to buildings. And then this is a new slide that I added for you that is actually the preference survey data. I heard a few people mention some of these numbers earlier. So if you look at this slide, the first column for both elementary and middle, these are the number of students that their parents said they would return to school when we come back for Plan B. So 14,948 elementary, 6,756 middle school students. And then if you look at the middle column, those are the parent, those are the number of students whose parents said they would actually stay home for concurrent instruction. So you can see the numbers there. That's a total of 8,000 students. And then at the last two columns were no responses. So if you look at these numbers, it really is about 21,000 students that would be in school, elementary and middle only, if we returned to Plan B, with about 8,351 whose parents have said they would stay home for learning, for concurrent instruction. If you add it, I totaled up the last column. If no responses actually showed up, you'd be at about 25,000. If no responses stayed home, you'd be at about 12,000. So that's the last. And now this time, we're going to bring up Jennifer Corso, who is our director of school nursing, who is going to share with you the most recent metrics from the Forsyth Health Department.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board, and Dr. Hairston. The Forsyth County Department of Public Health provides an update. It's also available on Forsyth.cc. And this is what they have shared with us today is their most recent report. We'll just scroll through. The first slides are really statistical data that have to do with ethnicity, age. But the purpose of them sharing this surveillance with us is specifically for the indicators that they've discussed with you previously. So we'll go to those slides and slide five and six. If you can find that for me. That's perfect, thank you. So before you, you'll see the core indicators that, again, public health asks that you all consider in your metric, for your metrics for reopening. The core indicators are on the left-hand side of that column. And again, it speaks to the incidence of cases, the positivity rate, and then the mitigation strategies that as a school district, we can implement. To the right, you'll see obviously from green to red, evaluating lowest to highest risk. So if we'll slide, go to slide six, please. So again, this is the most recent data is, again, is on Forsyth.cc. The time period that it considers is October 11th through the 24th. And again, these are only, the numbers that you see before you are for Forsyth County residents specifically. The incident rate looks at for a population of 100,000, how many new cases have they identified in that period of time? You will see there 783. The population is based on the most recent census numbers that we have of 382,295. So the rate is 204.8. And as you can see, it is, does complement the previous slide, which shows it is the highest risk based on that incident rate. If we can scroll down just slightly, Kevin, thank you. This slide speaks to the current positivity rate for tests. Again, Forsyth County Department of Public Health, they take all of the reported labs. They extrapolate just the citizens of our county. In that 14-day period of October 11th through the 24th, they conducted 9,496 tests, again, for Forsyth County residents. And of that, a positivity rate of 8.2. So it's with these two numbers. If we can go back to slide five, please. So with these numbers in consideration, you can obviously see the number of new cases for 100,000 and that, again, that 14-day time period was 204.8, which goes to the highest risk of transmission. The positivity rate is 8.2, which is high risk. And again, as far as the mitigation factor, which is the only factor that we as a school district can actively participate in, that is in our control, again, with all the hard work that people throughout the district have implemented, these mitigation factors are listed there below, such as the consistent incorrect use of mask, which we have strongly emphasized, a social distancing, which Tricia spoke to, hand hygiene, cleaning disinfection going on ongoing, and of course, the piece of contact tracing. So meaning that if the school district has all of those five implemented, which we feel like we have, that is in the green column. But you do have to consider the positivity rate and also the incident rate. So each one of these core indicators cannot be thought of just in itself. You have to truly consider all three when you evaluate transmission risk. So that's everything I have for my presentation. I don't know if you have any questions that I can answer on any of these slides specifically?
I know these all have to do with the COVID metrics. Are there any other metrics that we're using such as for unintended or the negative consequences like that have been mentioned, like the abuse going on, mental health, physical health issues? I just want to make sure we're looking at the whole picture and not just one piece of it.
Thank you. That is not something that public health has provided to us. If we would like to get that from maybe some of our local healthcare providers, we definitely could look into that and then report that back to the board.
I think Board Member Mott Singer has a question.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First, thank you so much. As far as the masks being used correctly and consistently, my understanding is that we are going to dispense five approved masks to every staff and student. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And can we have a requirement that they wear a mask that is equal to or better as far as protection does? Because one of my concerns, of course, is that many of the masks people are wearing are either wildly ineffective or worn incorrectly.
So thank you.
So I'm very concerned about that.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Mott Singer. I would say as far as making that a requirement, that is something that I would assume would have to be a legal decision as far as, or as a district that you specify specific masks. That's not something I'm prepared to answer tonight. We can get back with you as far as if we're going to have any specific requirements for masks.
Okay, I just think it's really important if we're putting in mitigating strategies that we're really serious about what those mitigating strategies will be and how they will be enforced.
Ms. Mott Singer, this is Deion Deakins. What I would suggest is if the board is willing to discuss only allowing certain types of face coverings, that we can add this as a discussion item at the next policy committee.
Okay, I'm just, again, I'm really concerned about that when we present mitigating strategies, that we actually have a way of making sure that we are using those correctly and consistently if that's what we're presenting as part of our metrics. I also wanted to ask about cleaning supplies because, sorry, I was going to ask. Some of the cleaning supplies I've been seeing have concerns about ventilation and anybody using them. Have we been addressing that and how are we going to address that? Particularly for teachers to be using those things in their classrooms.
Lauren Richards, would you, I think she might be, is she virtual tonight? We asked her to prepare a presentation, or not a presentation, but she has a response to that if we want to. I think Ms. McManus had one more addition, if it's okay, to the presentation. And we'll get Lauren, if it's okay, Chair Woodbury.
While Lauren's coming. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then I did have one other question for Ms. McManus. Or should I, am I?
She's at the, yes, you can go ahead.
The other question I had is about computers that have been signed out to students, whether, you know, whether they're iPads or the Chromebooks. My understanding is once we go to Plan B, all of those signed out devices have to come back to the schools. And yet even in the, we're talking about students being in person only two days a week. Well, how are we going to manage students not having devices at home and going to, into, in person only part-time?
So if Lauren will pick up the question about the cleaning supplies and the safety aspect, and Kevin can, Cheryl, Sister Superintendent of Technology can address the technology for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, while Lauren is coming up to talk about, I wanted to say the cleaning supplies, I wanted to talk about one more thing, and that is with contact tracing, November 2nd, our dashboard will be up for the public to start to be able to see the cases. And that'll be November 2nd, so next week.
Good, thank you.
Good evening. So the cleaner that's being used in our schools is a Cleanworks Number Nine. It is a disinfectant. There are a number of different chemicals that are in that classification. This one specifically is a quaternary ammonia solution. This is on the state's EPA registered list of disinfectants. And so the things that you do see on this label are things that are standard on that type of label. And so I think, Ms. Mott Singer, you spoke about ventilation. And so when using this product, it is something that would want to be sprayed directly onto a hard surface. It should be misted onto that hard surface within two to three inches, not something that is sprayed openly in the air. This is not an aerosol product. And so doing so in a very controlled fashion is not going to be something that's going to be picked up into a ventilation system. And when we're doing the fogging, that is going to be a time period where there is one individual in that space that is using that fogger, that is actually moving in more of a backwards motion and walking away from that item as they lay that chemical down and then exit that area.
Is the fogging the same chemical?
It is. Yeah, the fogger uses any water soluble disinfectant, and so it is the same chemical. We want to make sure that we're not mixing the quaternary ammonia with other types of chemicals like a bleach solution or a hydrogen peroxide and mixing those chemicals.
Thank you.
Thank you. With regard to the Chromebooks, we have roughly 38,000 Chromebook devices in our students' hands grades pre-K through 12. Our current strategy, should we go to Plan B as it's laid out currently, is to ask our pre-K through second grade to bring their devices back to school. There are roughly 7,200 of those students that have a Chromebook device. Our thought there is that those are the students that would be in class sessions four days a week based on the current plan. So it made more sense to have those devices in-house used four days a week than to sit at home four days a week. So that is the only age group that we're recommending bring the device back and turn it in. Our grades three, our grades three through 12, which is the remaining 28,000, we're going to ask those students to carry that device to and from school based on the days that they're in school, and they'll have it for remote learning outside of that. And one additional point, over the last two weeks, we have rolled out 5,540 brand-new Chromebooks back into the schools in carts. This is part of our Chromebook purchase that you guys approved months ago that we finally received those, half of those. So we've rolled those out over the last two weeks. Those are distributed to all of our schools to be shared for those students that come back to school that don't have our Chromebook. They need a device to use in the while at school, so they'll be used for that matter. And then the last point, there's an additional 9,000 that we hope to have by January 1st that will also roll into the schools for shared use. So in the combination of three through 12 that have a device now carrying, the pre-K through two bringing back, and the new ones in the building, we feel like we're going to cover most students on a daily basis for instruction, whether it be in-house or remote. Questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have just one other question. I know we had talked at the COVID committee meeting about surveying high school students about Flex Fridays instead of Flex Wednesdays. Have we had that survey done?
Ms. McManus met with a focus group of students and we sort of came to some consensus.
So we didn't send a survey to all students, but we did have a focus group. We invited about 30 high school juniors and seniors, and we had about six. And they were definitely clear that they were interested in keeping their day on Friday. And so what we were discussing, what we're trying to do right now is figure out how many schools are sharing staff between middle and high school because if we are staggering our start times, we were going to allow high school students to continue on Fridays as they're still home. And so that would be a win-win so they don't have their schedules interrupted. The students were really amazing. They said, I said, tell me what you would tell someone that says, "You might just want a day off, a longer weekend," because that's what we hear. And they said, "Well, those same people that are trying to slack on the Friday would slack on the Wednesdays." They were amazing, amazing group of high schoolers. But anyway, so basically, yes, so that would be a win-win. We're also, for the permanent change, we are having to gather some data because middle and high schools do share some staff. So we'll keep you posted, Ms. Mott Singer.
Thank you so. Thank you so much. I just, I feel so much for our children who are really working hard to be resilient, as are our teachers, and all of us, all of us are working hard to be resilient. So, thank you.
Chair Woodbeard, a couple of questions. The nurse extensions, will that give us at least one nurse per school? I'm not sure who needs to answer this, but anyway.
I can answer even though that's the expert and the person that oriented them and created their schedules. It will still, they still are rotating, so the goal is between our nurses from the Health Department and our extenders that every school would see a nurse two days a week, which is at least a day more. In some cases, it might even be up to three, but it would not be every day yet.
Okay, but it will be more days than
Than currently.
than we have, they have had in the past?
Yes.
And also, the data that was collected about who was returning to school? When was that? We did that survey, if I remember correctly, right after we put out the first set of metrics that we would be following. Is that, is that correct? I mean, was that survey done maybe like a month ago?
It was, the survey was probably done about two weeks ago, and each school sent it out individually, maybe even three weeks ago. We presented, I'm thinking, I can't remember the exact date, I need to look, but I feel like it was about three weeks ago. And then the schools, if you remember that first night we presented it, there were many students that still had not responded. And so schools then reached back out to many families, and that's why the numbers actually, there are more numbers of responses now. So they've been reaching out for the last two weeks, so the data you received today is actually very current.
Okay, so, and let's say a parent responded the very first day that it went out. And so now, they might want to change that decision simply because cases are arising. Are we allowing for that? Are schools staying in touch with folks to get a really accurate number of like, Ms. Smith's classroom will have 14 students, you know? And I know that you had sent us those numbers by class, and thank you very much for that, that was very helpful. But I was just wondering if that, if we are, if that's going to be the case, or if we can make that the case, or whatever.
So I will tell you, we haven't done another round of a survey since the metrics, you know, and like, even more recently, like today, there are new metrics presented. We had not planned on doing another round of a survey. That's not to say we could not do that. If a parent wanted to call and say, I'm changing my mind, they absolutely could do that with their school.
So, Ms. McManus or Dr. Harrison, you may be able to kind of definitely put on the forefront for this board and our community that wasn't saying for safe county schools is now part of the ABC Science Collaborative, and I sent the board their most recent presentation research. I think that, you know, because, you know, I think that not only do we sit up here, you know, as vulnerable people trying to make decisions around science and medicine and all the things that we may or may not have, I know I don't, expertise in, it becomes incumbent upon us now to definitely be engaged with those whom are and be engaged in the conversation around how do we open up schools safely that is driven more around the collection of data and science and action research? And it's like, I don't know, 60 pages, so again, I'll send it again, right? Because we just getting so much information. But I was actually on the call, and I think Marilyn Parker, because you're the COVID chair, was also invited. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I just want this community to know that, you know, this district and this board is working hard to be informed and guided by science and health. And just briefly, and then Dr. Harrison can kind of give more detail, because she's been engaged prior, before we were officially accepted into this cohort. But the ABC Science Collaborative pairs scientists and physicians with school and community leaders to help understand the most current and relevant info about COVID. It helps school leaders make informed decisions about returning to school using data from their own communities. The ultimate goal of the program is to keep teachers, children, and local communities healthy and safe. The Coalition or the Collaborative was initiated through Chapel Hill, Durham, Orange, and Wake, so it is led by Duke University. They have a whole series of webinars that have really helped teachers in that the Chapel Hill, Wake, Durham area really process the real fear that, of course, I still have going on the campus of North Carolina A&amp;T in teaching, and as teachers think about coming onto our campus, you know, at some given point. And so, I really would like for, you know, either Dr. Harrison or Ms. McManus to kind of give the community an update on this collaborative. And I will say that I have reached out to Novant Health to ask if they could join the collaborative, because it's an open collaborative if you North Carolina. And the more relevant connections we have to the collaborative, meaning our school district with one of the health teams here, then we have that much more relevant data.
Thank you so much. We became aware, actually, they admitted only a few schools to the collaborative, and then decided to allow large districts to join. So our first official meeting was this past Friday, which will give us access. So we're talking to Brent Campbell about placing some of the educational webinars on our website. The thing about the ABC Collaborative, we hear so much information. I mean, I just cannot imagine a time when the emails came so rampant. And one email counters the other email. And then some people email three and four times a day, and sometimes they contradict themselves in the same day. And so, so do newscasters, you know, it just, it just goes on and on and on. And so, as we try to really sift through the emails, and I know the board members, that's one thing I can say that's obvious, is that you all read all those emails, and you try to respond to most of them. And I think that's honorable, actually, because I don't think people realize how many come to us. But we also have information that we have to analyze on a regular basis, whether it be from our newscasters, who are doing the best they can do, and those kinds of things. It's just so much information coming. So what this collaborative does, they basically break everything down to here are the actual facts. Without all of the other things added, these are the facts about returning to school. These are the facts about masking. These are the facts about studies that are done. We may read some information from a study that suggests one mask is better than the other. They will actually tell you how many people participated in the study so you can get better, you can make a better decision. Because if you have a mass study and only 100 people participate, and people go off and write articles, then you'll have another study with 200 people participating that's contrary. So they really do a lot of research behind the research to get to a, and one of the things that resonated with us was that the fear is real. People are very, very, we can't, we can't begin to really understand that the fear is not made up, it's real. And we must start to educate people and build relationships and help people understand the things that are working and acknowledge the things that are not working. And I think that starting to share those educational seminars and webinars that are now accessible to us will help educate people who want to be educated, people who want to receive the information. And so I think this collaborative will help the district in moving forward and educating staff, educating teachers, and getting the real science in front of us and cutting through a lot of the other, the extra that's added to what we have to do. So, thank you to our board attorney who navigated the agreement. It doesn't cost us a thing, just time, and we certainly look forward to sharing that, the information more with you all.
Thank you. And I think I did too. I probably sent everybody an individual text of the most recent key findings from a research. I don't want to belabor, but, you know, these points went against my perception and what I thought I was looking at with metrics. And so I'm having to, you know, really engage that much more with the superintendent and staff and our board around, you know, how to, you know, reopen. So, are there any other questions for Ms. McManus for the reopening? Okay, thank you. So the next agenda item is action items. And is there a motion for consider approval of the schematic plan for metal lark traffic improvement?
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? I'm going to now call on Board Member Mott Singer to let us know your vote.
Yes.
Board Member Burke? Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. The next action item is to
Brammer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Andrea, I was thinking you were still sitting beside me. Yes, Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The next action item is to consider approval of the Title I application. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Did you get that? Okay, so Board Member Burke? Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The next action item is to consider approval of the Equity Advisory Bylaws.
Motion to approve. With the changes that Marilyn
Yeah, can we put the changes in there for that, to add the chair language in there, please?
Can you be specific on what you'd like added, Ms. Parker?
Well, I think that Ms. McMillan had said that the superintendent in the board would would specify how a chair would be selected. I think that's kind of what she said. She may have used different language than that, but.
Okay, so, okay, so school board members, the superintendent or designate will select advisory committee, adding that part. Okay. Okay.
I think Ms. McMillan
Is she around?
Well, okay, so, the school board members, the superintendent or designate will select an advisory committee. Chair and or co-chair will work closely with the Office of Equity and Accountability to execute the duties set forth. And so, it will be, it's in there. It will be collected. It would be. Did Effie McMillan leave? So what she, what she wrote was, school board members, she sent an update.
Oh, okay, she sent an update.
Yes.
All right.
She, yeah, she sent an update. Is that okay?
Can you read it again?
Sure. School board members, the superintendent and or designate will select the advisory committee chair and or co-chair who will closely work with the Office of Equity and Accountability to execute the duties set forth in the bylaws. Okay?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is to consider approval of facility, for the Facility Advisory Bylaws or of the Facility Advisory Bylaws. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Board Member Mott Singer, can we take that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is to consider approval of the calendar changes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is to consider approval of the extension of the Legacy Student Credit Union Contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Consider approval of the student assignment priorities. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor?
Yes, oh, this is a, just a comment that I want us to, after seeing everything, be free to have a conversation instead of accepting it completely as written. Or, or I guess the motion was made, so I'll have to vote no. Thank you.
Board Member Brammer? Board Member Brammer?
No. No.
Board Member Burke?
No.
Deion, what was the, we Six, okay, motion, motion passes. The next or last action item is to consider approval to delay phase reentry as requested by Board of Education COVID-19 Committee. Is there a motion?
Chair, would there
Yes.
I would like to make an additional motion to delay the return of our staff to the schools as well.
I think that that would be, is that a substitute, Deion? No. Oh, okay.
Sorry, Deion, I did not understand what you said. Please say that again.
Okay, so the action item is to consider approval to delay phase reentry as requested by Board of Education COVID-19 Committee.
And to clarify, that would be the motion that was made at the committee to delay the return of students for two weeks.
Do we have a, I mean, do we have a motion on the floor now? I'm a little confused.
I don't believe anyone has made a motion yet.
Okay, right.
Deion, please advise how I add this additional motion to delay the return of staff as well.
So Ms. Burke, to clarify, are you, are you also making a motion to delay the return of students?
That is the motion on the floor, Deion. I am adding an additional motion, and I'm asking how do we do that to give consideration to our staff as well?
Okay, and I apologize, Ms. Burke, that might have been the part you didn't hear. There has not been a motion made yet to delay students.
So I think what I'm hearing Board Member Burke say is that she would like to make a motion to delay the phase reentry as requested by the Board of Ed COVID-19 Committee and to include staff as well. Is that possible?
That is exactly what I'm asking. Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer.
That's not a substitute to
Because we didn't have a motion. It's an amended motion. It's an amended motion.
Okay, so then we will, is there a motion to
It sounds like Ms. It sounds like, based on Ms. Burke's clarification, she's making a motion to delay the return of students and staff for two weeks. Is that right, Ms. Burke?
That is correct.
Second, Bremer.
So is there a second, because she's, we're in a substitute or amended motion, so is, is there a second? Okay, so there's a second to the amended motion by Board Member Burke. Are there further questions or discussion?
This is Elizabeth. Just as a discussion, I really would like us in the future to please come up with our clear metrics, whose measurements we're using, and what are the parameters, so that this can be clear to the community and to our teachers and to all of our staff, so that we can make a decision and not constantly have to do this again. So, that's just my comment about the motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the amended motion? Okay, any opposed? All right, Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Board Member Bremer?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion failed.
For Chair Woodbury, I'd like to make an alternate motion to bring back EC and pre-K in Week 1, bring back kindergarten in Week 2, and bring back first graders in Week 3.
I'll second that motion.
Yes, to bring back exceptional children and pre-K in Week 1, bring back kindergartners in Week 2, and bring back first graders in Week 3, with the idea that we know that our youngest learners and our exceptional children population are disproportionately disadvantaged right now with this epidemic. We also recognize that a slow transition back in is going to be better for our schools and our teachers to be able to prepare for students to come back. I don't think it would be a good idea to bring everybody back at, at once, but to do a very carefully crafted transition. You know, bringing back three grades and EC over three weeks, I think is a reasonable approach. Without muddying this more, I, I am concerned about the, the risk section that we are in as far as positive cases, but I think that needs to be measured against the other things like what was done in the presentation today. There's the COVID metric, but there's also other metrics that we need to be considering, especially the unintended, unintended negative consequences toward our children and families' mental and physical well-being right now. So whereas I respect the COVID metric, I think there's other things that need to be considered.
Again, I'll second the motion with Leah, and I just have a clarifying question about the
We're in question and discussion period officially.
We are, yeah, good. Thank you, Chair Woodbury. So, part of that too would be what, my, my question would be, we've addressed in the, in the motion, the return of students, and at that point, where are we with the return of, of our staff? Would that, would that follow the, the two weeks?
So the staff, the staff for EC, for EC pre-K and they returned this past week. And the next group is scheduled to return on the 2nd. And so, yes.
So that falls in line. Thank you for clarification on that. And, and I just, I think, Board Member Crowley brought up that there's a wide range of, of, I think, metrics that we have to look at and unintentional consequences. And so I also, I'm glad that, that we talked a little bit tonight about also some of the, the studies and delving into, I would say, trying to get accurate information, and it seems like the, the, the needle and the ball moves all the time. But, you know, I, I believe that, that, that we owe this to, to the kids to bring these back, especially the, the, the children that are really struggling in front of that screen. And, you know, I, we have been in multiple school buildings to see, outside of the district, to see this being done. We're seeing Wake and Mecklenburg go back, and I don't think there's a perfect plan. I think one of the things that we heard when we visited schools is that, that you have to adjust and be willing to do that. And so I think the, the measured, slow return will allow those adjustments to take place. And, you know, I, I also, I feel like our, that we can do this with a can-do attitude. And I think that, is the fear real? Yes. There are some folks who are really fearful right now. And is the virus real? Yes. And do we need to wear a mask and socially distance and follow it? Yes. But I also believe that we also are teaching our kids that we can, we can adapt and we can do this in a, in a safe, measured way. And so, I, I believe if, if, if the others around us are doing this, that we can definitely do it. And especially considering, I believe, that we as a district have many more resources than several of the, the, the schools that are making this happen, so. Yes.
This is Andrea Bremer, and I would like to also point out the fact that the CDC has also noted that our excessive death rate shows that our COVID count is actually about 67% of the actual COVID count. And we have had the four largest days on record this week from all the way back in January. So the past four days in a row are the highest ever. And we just said, do not stop students from going into a classroom and adults from going into a classroom where we have the fourth highest day on record in a row at 67% of excess death. That is outrageous. And any parent who is concerned, sign your children out.
Ma'am, please, order.
I have
Yes.
a question. I'd also like to make sure, and I think Ms. McMillan has answered that question, that any parent who at this point wants to, to change their vote or their mind, that we, we allow that. Because I do think that, that folks are looking at, at what's happening. And, and we need to allow the families to make those decisions on their own. I also would like to, to Ms. Burke's point, I would, I would like to, to just clarify. So, right now, before teachers come back two weeks prior to the stu, their students' appointed time to return to class. Is that correct, Dr. Hairston? Okay. Those have, but I, like, I'm referring to, like, 3rd grade that won't return. Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify that, because we're getting, we're getting a lot of information that teachers are being required right now to be in classes and, and in classrooms, and they're not, their students are not returning anytime soon.
We, we, the last meeting we had, we indicated teachers will continue to return on schedule. Basically, because principals need the teachers there to plan. And this technology that you see before you, they have not been trained. And again, not knowing which way the board would vote, we wanted teachers to continue along their schedule.
Yes, that's, I believe the teachers should, I think we should roll with the, the schedule that we've set forth with staff.
Let me look at that and see. I just.
So, so teachers are, are, and, and what we're learning is that teachers, yes, here it is. So the CTE nursing, that, you know, they've been going since the 5th. The students and the teachers have been in schools since the 5th. Pre-K, EC pre-K teachers and all, support staff reported, reported on the 12th. So they've been in school for some time now. Grades K through 3 reported on the 19th, so they have been in school since the 19th. If you could, oh, I see. Okay. So they've been in school since the 19th. And the two groups remaining are grades 4, 5, 7, and 8, and high school teachers, the 30th. And part of the 30th, we, we, we have not been relieved of the testing requirement for face-to-face, testing requirement for students in January. So preparing during the month of December for those face-to-face, principals need help preparing for that. And that was why we pushed that out to that date. And then training teachers on the use of the technology.
Okay, so, so looking at this, it looks like grades 4, 5, and 7, and 8, well, teachers will not return till November 2nd.
Yes, but we, yes.
But it sounds like some of them are there or being required to be there now, so. And, so, I mean, they're not, technically do not have to be there until November 2nd, correct?
Yes, this is posted on our website.
Okay. I, I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make that clear, because it seems to be contrary to what, to what I'm hearing, so I just want to make sure.
I think so. We can clarify, know that there's a motion and, and we seconded. And I think in the motion, there was like the Week 1, Week 2, Week 3. If we can clarify what those, what those dates are.
Yeah, it looked like. And to just to clarify again, we're talking about EC, pre-K, 1, 2, and 3 is what I heard. Board Member Crowley put, can you, can you clarify? Because that's what I heard.
Ms. Woodbury?
Yes.
If I may, I'll, I'll read back what I heard. That EC and pre-K would return in Week 1, but I think we probably need clarification of what Week 1 means. Kindergarten would return in Week 2, and first graders would return in Week 3. And then I'm, I'm assuming everything else would be as planned or pushed back. Those are some clarifying, clarifying questions.
I would, I would think that after that, everything would go as planned, is, is what, I think this is just around the, the start. Is my, you know, what I would like to see as a board member, and, and I think I understand the concept of, of what we're talking about as far as nailing down a date. Some of that I would, I would ask Dr. Hairston to see, you know, when, when logistically this can, can happen for staff and students.
I, I would suggest, I mean, the, the, the pre-K is ready, and EC is ready. I would suggest that they be allowed to return Monday, the 2nd. The next group, if you stick with the one week, is the 9th. And the first grade is the 16th, which is, if you'll pull that chart back up, Kevin, and leave it there, would be the 16th. What I think might be a good idea is to come back, that's right before Thanksgiving. For you to come back before Thanksgiving and get a report on the status of things and make a decision about other grade levels from that point.
That's an excellent idea. So, so what I'm hearing is that Week 1 would be, would start November 2nd, Week 2, November 9th, Week 3, November 16th?
Correct. And that's, gets everybody in before Thanksgiving. You can, we can assess where we are and then move forward from there.
Board Member Parker has a question, and then I'll get you, Board Member Mott Singer.
I don't know whether this is a question or a suggestion, but just, can we also, in the planning stages, Dr. Hairston, have some kind of plan for integrating those little kindergartners before they come back on, on the, on the 9th? It's going to be a different year typically. I remember taking my little babies in and, you know, putting them, making sure they went to class and, and all that, and had a open house in a nice little way to make sure that my little baby was going to be safe. We're not going to have those options this year, because parents are going to have to put them out at the door. They're not going to be able to, you know, to, just, just to have that mommy feeling that's good. Can we, can we make sure that we have some kind of planning for some integration of, of the kindergartners into their classroom with the parents, so that we, we make sure that that's a good transition for everybody involved? And that's easily harder on mommies than it is the babies anyway, but, but just so that the mom, you know, that we have a good, good family time there.
That's a regular board meeting on the 17th. May I suggest there be a presentation from, from this team here? And then you can make decisions from there, what will happen after Thanksgiving.
That's a great suggestion.
I, I think that we may look at something virtual. I think a lot of school districts are very cautious about letting people other than staff and students in the building, but I do understand, Board Member Parker, your interjection around, how do we get parents, especially for our pre-K and K students, engaged before they, they come? And I'll leave that up to the health experts and whatnot.
Exactly, but just to make sure they understand even how drop off and all that, I mean, you know, just so that we make that nice transition for, so that everybody understands what's happening and we're, they're not, you know, sending their baby in without understanding where, who's going to take them to class and who's going to, you know, just, just making sure we're being clear with all those things.
In anticipation of opening earlier, our principals are prepared for an orientation. They had a very good virtual orientation before school, and we'll do the same, Ms. Parker, for, for this group. We'll ask, we'll meet with the principals in the morning and ask them to queue that up.
The last question I, I would have before we, you know, take the second amended motion is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Board Member Mott Singer, go ahead. I jumped in front of you.
So, I'm, I'm trying to understand, in this motion, are we saying that we actually don't care what the metrics say? That this decision is made regardless of the metrics?
Yep.
No, I think we're considering all the metrics.
I just want to have it really clear that we're making a decision that says that the metrics are irrelevant.
So, we need to have some order? We just need to have order?
To make that clear, that that's what we're, that that's what we are in fact saying.
So, just, just to get some order, I think right now, Board Member Mott Singer has made a, a point. It's, and it's her right to have that opinion, but it was just posed as a question. And I, is, is there another point of discussion? I know I was getting ready to say something, but I did jump in front of Board Member Mott Singer, but Board Member Crowley has a point.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that there, there are the different metrics that were shown here today. And in one, and that is if we use all five things to, for, for protection, or that we do the contact tracing, that we wear the mask, those five things, that puts us in a low risk. So, I mean, unless I'm reading the chart wrong, there's, there's areas where in low risk and there's areas where we are in a higher or highest risk. And then we also talked about considering the other consequences that, that we don't have a metric for, but we're definitely getting anecdotally, and we're hearing from pediatricians and psychiatrists. And I'm not sure who else everybody's hearing from, but that's who I'm hearing from. So I don't think it's that we're disregarding metrics, it's just that we're trying to put, look, guys, this is, this is a terrible burden for everybody sitting behind this panel and, and the three board members at home. And we, we want to do the best thing for kids, we want to do the best thing for families, we want to do the best thing for educators. And it's incredibly stressful trying to come up with the, with the right answer when there is no precedence for any of this. And yes, it does seem like the target keeps moving, but that's because everything keeps moving. And if something says we're at high risk, yet, yet school systems are having success in that, then we have to, we have to measure that against the other things. If, it's, at high risk doesn't mean that everybody's getting infected. What did we say? We were still? What did we say, we were still at less than 1% of the population or 2% of the population? So, I think when you take everything in, in a whole, that, that's how you make a better decision than just focusing on one piece of this puzzle. And it truly is a puzzle. And I just appreciate, um, Board Member Jones mentioning, whatever decision we have, we need to go forward with a can-do attitude. We have expected so much from our teachers, and they're the ones who need to be supported the most through this. And I hope that happens at the school level, but there, that concerns me, that they're gonna get enough help with cleaning, with supervising children. But we gotta find a way to come together to make this work for our whole community. And that's, that's how I feel about the metrics part.
I, I just wanted to, um, kind of reiterate, you know, the national guideline around, um, metrics accountability and, you know, in addition to labs putting out the, um, accuracy around those whom have been tested and they're positive. And then you have insurance companies engaged in, engaged in the metrics. And this is, of course, coming into the CDC by way of, they have to report on, also, they report on who is positive by way of folk getting tested. So, you know, that's another layer. And then the third layer is around, and the CDC is very specific around investigation and tracing, that if systems and organizations can definitely, um, have some intentionality around investigation and tracing, then you put yourself in less risk factors. There are no zero risk factors, let's be clear. All, you know, some of you in here, you're at risk, and we are too. So, there are no zero risk factors other than not being born, and, you know, you're not here anymore. So, I think we just need to be perfectly transparent and realistic. I think at this point, the country is trying to move forward. But I make the point around investigation and tracing as a, um, strong model to try to sustain less risk, because I know that we are hiring contact tracers, and we have COVID coordinators. And I was wondering where we are with the, um, contact tracers and the, um, other support or nurses that we have. Oh, okay, I'll get you, Board Member Burke, thank you.
That's okay. If, if, if it's okay for her.
Are you ready?
Okay.
Give us one second. Um, Ms. Corso, the lead, um, health person at the district now, is getting ready to respond to where we are with the contact tracers. And then I'll get your question, Board Member Burke.
Thank you for that question, uh, Chair Woodbury. So, as far as the contact tracers, we're actually actively in, uh, interviewing those individuals. And we hope to select candidates by the end of the week, if not early next week. So, that's an active process, with the intent on hiring them, uh, as quickly as possible. I would expect in, in weeks, we'll have them in place and trained. For the nurse extenders, those are the agency nurses that Ms. McManus spoke of. They are already in schools, they already have school assignments, they started that, their school assignments, uh, yesterday. So, they're already engaged in their schools. Um, we have, currently have 19, we have funding for 20, so we still have one more to go. But, um, they're a wonderful group of nurses, and we're, we're very fortunate to have them committed to the, uh, to the district.
So, would it, would they be doing contract tracing definitely right now before, before the contact tracers would be hired then?
So, they will assist with that. Um, there are some limitations that the nurse extenders have. They do not, they are not school district employees, so they will not have power school, they will not have school district email. So, they will really support school nurses, myself, in the contact tracing process in any time. So, they're a support, uh, the school nurses are, are actively engaged in this process. We really do approach this as a team, and they're part of the team.
Okay. Does someone have a, I think Board Member Burke has a question?
Uh, yes, I'm asking this question for clarification for the community. Uh, we're receiving emails right now, and community members would like to know. And, uh, whoever would like to speak to this, feel free. Uh, the COVID committee met last week, and they voted. And they voted to delay the opening of school for two weeks. And that would put us back, not November 2nd, but November 9th. So, can this be said in a clear way, what has happened here tonight for our public?
Uh, uh, Ms. Burke, I just want to say that I'm a member of that COVID committee. I was not at the, was not able to attend that committee meeting. I believe there's only five of us on there, so if, if, if someone took a vote, that was four people. I don't think that the committee has the power to delay anything, uh, just the committee. And I think that's why I had to come to the attention of the full board. I believe our superintendent, uh, tried to, uh, even put, call a special called meeting. And I don't think it worked into our schedules to be able to do that, so that's why it's before us tonight. So, I don't think we're reversing anything. Anything that comes from committee has to be voted on by the full board, is that correct, Ms. Jinkits?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Jones. And since you were not there, I'm going to go to the Chair of the COVID Committee. Uh, Board Member Parker, can you explain to the community what was stated in that meeting, so that there will be, uh, no uncertainty about what has happened? Because the understanding was, uh, we would delay the opening of school for two weeks. That would put us at November 9th, and now we are back at November 2nd.
Uh, yes, that was the recommendation of the committee with the, um, the metrics that we looked like at that, at that time and discussion that we had.
Okay, so that was the recommendation of the committee, and it was recommended to bring that to the bo- board for a full vote, uh, and so where, and what happened tonight? Where are we, and what happened to that coming to the board tonight?
It, it, it has, well, Dion, maybe you should answer this, but what I will say is that based on how we operate according to, you know, um, Robert rules and board, um, policy, then, you know, the, the committee cannot make a decision for the good of the board. Um, it has to come before the whole board, before an official decision. I think that's why on the agenda it states, um, you know, the, the exact wordage is not in front of me, but it is from the recommendation of the COVID committee. So, the, it has to come before the entire board, and that's, I was at the meeting, and I do recall that the COVID committee decided to delay based on a motion from Board Member Mott Singer, but it has to come before the whole board, before it is, you know, what we're going to do as a school district. But Dion, could you add some, um, clarification for Board Member Burke?
So, um, Madam, Madam Chair, that's correct what you said. Um, the committee voted to delay and to bring the recommendation to the full board. There was a four members that voted in favor of it, which is not a consensus and not a majority of the board. So, it needed to come here for a full board vote. Um, but there was no motion, there was no motion made to adopt that recommendation tonight.
Um, please clarify for me, because I'm not a member of that committee, but I attended that meeting last week. And at the conclusion of the meeting, it was stated that this would be, uh, brought to the full board, and not tonight, as a matter of fact. It was stated that it would be brought to the full board on Thursday during a special called meeting that was canceled. And that is what community members have been expecting and waiting for us to vote on. So, please explain to me what happened.
So, I, I have a transcript of the meeting, and, and primarily, we, um, I suggested that we have a call board meeting to bring it before the full board, but not, uh, we couldn't come to some, the calendars conflict that was made in the meeting, and, and probably made in haste and without really polling the board. Usually, if we're gonna have a call board meeting, we will poll the board and give advance notice. So, as we began to poll the board, we found that many could not attend and had conflicts. So, we added it, um, to tonight's agenda, which is certainly appropriate.
Um, when, uh, the COVID committee met, uh, two members were not present, uh, on that committee last Monday. And, uh, other board members who are not part of that committee were present. So, we had seven board members who heard that we would have a meeting on Thursday and did not say that there was a conflict with their schedules, and we would have to, uh, uh, reschedule the meeting on Thursday. So, I have to lie, who would have?
So, Board, Board Member Burke, you know, unfortunately, there was, you know, um, miscommunication, maybe misunderstanding. I don't know if somebody else was getting ready to say something, but, um, you know, I, I think we all got the, um, publication around when we would have, um, this meeting and what was on the agenda. And so, I think too, that's why it's put out prior to, so that we can try to get some clarification around any communication concerns. But, you know, we, we take your point, and I think Board Member Parker was getting ready to.
I was just gonna say that I think that at the end of the meeting, it was just stated, and people didn't really look at their calendars and board member, I mean, yeah, board members who are not a part of that committee were not included in that, in, in the ability to say yes or no. And I, I don't think anybody was, so I, I assume that people looked at their calendars after the fact and figured out they had, maybe that they had, um, conflicts.
So, Board Member Burke, do you?
This is Mrs. Braemer. I, I want to make it just really straightforward and simple. The CDC number said we should close, Health and Human Services number said we should close. And instead of actually following the recommendation of the Forsyth County Department of Health, which also said we should close, we decided to go with our emotions and our feelings instead of the science.
So, Board, Board Member, um, Braemer, I, I think right now, Board Member Burke is just trying to get some clarification around the, um, the scheduling. And, and what I will say, Board Member Burke, is that originally, we were supposed to meet on that Thursday, and then all board members received communication to let us know that, um, we would vote on the reopening tonight. And again, you know, that it, this is a, a trying time, so we asking for grace and patience for everybody as we, you know, try to accommodate schedules to get the vote, um, before the public and move forward as soon as possible. So, your point is made, and we understand that there was a, a, a change in the schedule to have it come before the board tonight. I don't, I don't think we have any, you know, any back and forth with you about it. We, we understand your concern. Uh, do you have another one?
Chair Woodbury?
Yes, ma'am.
I do, because I, I really want to make sure that the board understands that a phone call was made to the parents in our school district. And the phone call told the parents that we would be delaying the return of our students for pre-K and EC pre-K for at least two weeks, and that the board would meet on October 27th today to discuss this delay further. And now, we're coming together, and we're having a totally different conversation. And that is not a good look for this board. And that decision, that decision to make that phone call was not made with full board, uh, with a full board vote. So, there's confusion, and we need to clarify that.
So, Ms. Burke, we, we will clarify that now. I think, um, Dr. Hairston, if you want to clarify the phone call that was made to, um, principals about?
To parents.
Was made to parents.
Well, following the meeting, fa- following the meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll listen.
Thank you.
Following the meeting, uh, I met with our communication staff, which is typical, and we made a phone call about, uh, a call board meeting. And, uh, at the same time, we were polling the board, and as people started to look at their calendars, they were not available in a, in a large way. And again, we, uh, looked at moving the meeting tonight, so we can have full participation. We didn't want anyone, uh, feeling left out or feeling they didn't have a voice. So, we knew tonight would be a night that everyone had agreed to come. We didn't have anybody saying they weren't going to come, and it was just a better evening, um, to make the decision. Pre-K, um, if they start on the 2nd, uh, they just as easily can start on the 9th if they're not prepared. It's a very small number of students, pre-K is not a large number that's coming back. Kindergarten gives us two weeks or a weekend a day, uh, almost two weeks to, to get started. Um, we, we would communicate, uh, in the morning with principals, um, and, uh, make, and if parents feel like they want to wait till the 9th, we certainly can accommodate that.
Okay.
But teachers have been at, but teachers have been in the building since the 19th, so they are, um, they have prepared.
So, right now, I just want to clarify, Ms., um, Board Member Mott Singer, that we have a substitute motion, and we kind of getting beyond the, um, the, the substitute, the second substitute motion. I want us to be clear that we're still in discussion and question, simply, well, only around, and I think some other issues are coming into it now, and so we need to stay focused. And I understand, you know, again, the confusion.
This is Elizabeth, and I am staying very focused. The focus is that we were sho- in our discussion, there were metrics used. The metrics are being ignored in this motion. I want to make sure it is very clear that when we are using metrics, we are not actually using them, and that we're making decisions based on other things than those metrics.
Thank, thank you for your, thank you, thank you, thank you for your perspective, uh, Board Member Mott Singer. Uh, uh, Board Member Burke, do you have a, do you have a question or concern again around the substitute motion that Board Member Crowley made? And we can get it restated, so that we're clear around, you know, this issue before we take the vote finally?
Uh, point of discussion, and we are still in discussion.
We, we are.
Are we, are we going to honor, are we going to honor the phone call that was made to our parents, informing them that we would delay the opening of school for two weeks? Or are we going to ignore the fact that that call was made, and that is what parents have planned for?
So, thank you, Board Member Burke, for raising that question. I think the superintendent has already responded, and if there are no further question or discussion, I would call for the, um, vote based on the substitute motion of Board Member Crowley. Dion, could you restate that, um, motion for clarification?
Yes, ma'am. So, the motion was to have pre-K and EC return week one, which through discussion was November 2nd. Kindergarten would return week two, which is November 9th. And first grade would return week three, which is November 16th. And it sounds as if based on discussion, all, because I'm getting questions emailed to me right now, is all other grades would remain as scheduled, is that correct?
I think that's, I, I think that Dr. Hairston recommended that we would come back to make that decision. That would not be the automatic progression.
So, all others remain in virtual until the 17th, and you'll get a report out on how people, and then you can make decisions on other grade levels.
Yes.
The 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Any, 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 any opposed? All right, Board Member Burke, what's your vote?
Board Member Woodbury, I'm not sure that I heard what we're voting on. Can you please say it a little louder for me?
Yes, ma'am. Dion is going to iterate the vo- or reiterate it again for, um, clarity. Dion, do you have a microphone?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Pre-K and EC would return November 2nd, kindergarten would return November 9th, and first grade would return November 16th. All other grades will remain on remote learning pending further conversation amongst the board on November 17th during that meeting.
Okay. So, Board Member Burke, what is your vote?
It's a no.
Okay. Board Member Mott Singer?
No.
Board Member Braemer?
No.
Thank you, the, um, motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the items as listed?
So, move.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Board Member Burke?
No.
Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Brammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. The next item on the, um, agenda is the, um, meeting open to the public. And, um, I think before we begin this section, I don't know if we're streaming tonight and to say goodnight, but we are, so yes. Good night to our Cable 2 viewers, and we want to thank you for watching. Um, as we move into our public comment section, again, I'll ask.